For the invocation and the pledges, Commissioner Gonzalez is going to lead us in our invocation. Our pastor had to cancel at the last minute today, so.
Pastor Jack. Lord God having Father, we come to you again, just give you thanks for everything you've given us, Lord. Give you thanks for allowing us to be here today. We also ask you today to pray for those families in Hawaii in the fire, families in the state of Texas that suffered any damages throughout the storm. Pray, Lord God, for this commission and score that we can make the right decisions, the right choices for the right reasons, and continue to work together after we make those choices. Lord God, we ask you to pray for families and pray for those families that are here today. Pray for our employees that continue to run this county and their citizens that we represent. Lord God, we tell you, give you thanks for just giving us today, Lord, and we ask you, hopefully, we can give us tomorrow. In name, we pray, Lord, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On our Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. You may be seated. It is Wednesday, August the 23rd, and we have all commissioners present. We are at 901 Leopard in the Oasis County Courthouse, and I am certifying, we do have a quorum present. Moving on to item D, are there any disclosures of conflicts of interest from any of you? If we get to that item, if you haven't disclosed, you can always mention it then, but there being none, we will move on to E, adopt the following resolutions and proclamations. And I think I will make the motion for this, if I could get a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and Peyton is going to read the proclamation, proclamation for Women's Equality Day. Thank you, ladies, for being here.
Okay. Whereas Carrie Chapman-Cap founded the League of Women Voters, a nonpartisan organization, in 1920 during the National American Women Suffrage Association Convention. The convention was held just six months before the 19th Amendment to the U.S. Constitution was ratified and certified, giving American women the right to vote after a centuries' struggle. Whereas, the League of Women Voters Corpus Christi area was formed in 1945, with Dorothy Green serving as its first president, and that the League has been an activist, grassroots organization, whose leaders believe that citizens should actively participate in governance, advocacy, and voting. And whereas, the League of Women Voters acts with trust, integrity, and professionalism, operates in an open and effective manner to educate the public through voter guides and candidate forums, takes the initiative to engage voters and defend democracy, and acknowledges the League's heritage at every opportunity. And whereas, for 78 years, the League of Women Voters Corpus Christi area has built citizen participation in the democratic process by engaging communities, promoting positive solutions to public policy issues through education, advocacy, and studying communities and state issues. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Commissioners' Court of Oasis County that we hereby proclaim August 26, 2023, as Women's Equality Day in honor of the League of Women Voters and in the celebration of the 103rd anniversary of women's right to vote in Oasis County, duly adopted by the vote of the Commissioners' Court of Oasis County, Texas, on this 23rd day of August, 2023.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. Do y'all have someone that wants to speak? Yes, Ms. Hawkins.
Good morning, everyone. Judge Scott and all the commissioners and all that are present. We certainly do appreciate you making this declaration. We are a group of women, diverse women.
They weren't this morning.
What happened?
Somebody unmuted themselves.
Oh, okay, I'm so sorry.
That's okay. Excuse us.
I thought I was gonna mess up. Okay. I just want to read our mission statement first, and then I just want to thank everyone. The League of Women Voters of Corpus Christi area is a nonpartisan grassroots civic organization which encourages informed and active participation in government, works to increase understanding of major public policy, issues, and influence public policy through education and advocacy. And we certainly appreciate the Commissioners' Court in giving us this declaration. We are here to bring more vision, more, that we can be seen more and be more visible in the community so that everyone will know what we stand for. We are nonpartisan, not bipartisan. And I just want to make that clear, and we thank everyone that is here for embracing us. Anybody out there that wants to join the League of Women Voters, you are more than welcome. We are also having our annual fundraising banquet on Thursday at Aris Steakhouse, and I am happy to say that we are sold out. Thank you. And the purpose of our fundraiser is for our voter guides, and I'm sure that many of you, as you politicked along the way for your jobs, you were given questions and answers, an opportunity to express who you are, what you stand for, and the voter guide is there to educate all of our voters in the community. So we thank you so much for this opportunity, and this is my wonderful group here. Thank you, ladies, for being here today with us.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here. We have a proclamation. If y'all want to do a photo up here or something, we have this for you.
Congratulations, ladies. Appreciate the job y'all did. You haven't sent them out yet, have you?
Thank y'all.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, moving on to item F, public comment. Do we have, nobody signed up for public comment? Is there anyone here that wishes to speak in public comment that didn't sign up? There being none, we will move on. I would ask, before we start on the next, I have some items that need to be tabled. Item 3A13 needs to be tabled. I'll make a motion to table. Table indefinite. It's not coming back. It doesn't need, I need 3A13 tabled. It was not supposed to be on there, so.
Wait, that's election week?
Yes. I need it tabled, please. I need a second. And Kara's where?
Oh, okay.
Yes, yes. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. The motion carries. That is tabled. I need to table 3F1 because the contract is not ready. We will move it to the next meeting that is on the higher right and under human resources.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Same sign.
I want to table F.
I'm sorry. To what date?
To the next meeting available.
That's just for F1? The other one was indefinitely?
F1 is, yeah, the other one is off, F1.
I want to table F2 for the next meeting. Evidently, what I requested is not the right thing.
The backup is not correct, yes. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. The motion passes. Thank you. And now we will move, oh, are there any other ones? Anybody wishes to table any other concerns on the agenda? We can always table it when we get to, if necessary, but I knew those were pulled to my attention. On the consent agenda, are there any items on the consent agenda you wish to pull for further discussion? If not, I will accept a motion to pass.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass the consent agenda. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. The motion passes. So we will move on to 3A1, the regular agenda. This is discuss and consider proposal for 2023 tax rate for Oasis County, Oasis County Farm and Market and Oasis County Hospital District. Commissioners' Court must take a record vote on this.
Thank you, Your Honor. In accordance with the tax code, we are required to propose a tax rate. This is only a proposal. It's not voting on the actual rate. The actual rate will be discussed and adopted on September 17th, I believe, if I'm correct. If not, it's around that time. This is just setting the ceiling. If the proposal rate is above the no new revenue tax, it requires special notification within the paper, and it does require to address public hearings and have a public notice for the balances. So at this time, I would like to, as we're going through our budget, as your budget officer, I'm going to propose a rate for the hospital district, and Johnny is available, should you have any questions. They had a board meeting, hearing, and they, they're proposing a rate of point, 0.085242. Again, 0.085242 per hundred dollar valuation. And that's the balances for the hospital district. If Johnny would like to address anything for that, that's my rate for the hospital district. If you want to, we'll leave that now and take a vote for that. And then we'll come back for the county.
Yes, Mr. Hip, you want to address the court on that one?
Just a brief comment. Good morning, commissioners. Good morning, Judge. The rate that we're asking to, for y'all to consider, is the voter approved rate. That's the pattern we used last year. We used the highest rate possible. As y'all know, we're going to come back and ask probably for a rate less than that.
Now, Johnny, the rate I gave you was not the voter approved rate. That was a 4%.
Right. Okay. So the 85242 is the 4% rate?
4% above the no new revenue tax.
And this, if we vote on this today, we are not voting that this is okay.
You're not voting on the rate. You're voting on.
This is just setting the ceiling that we could possibly vote on.
And requiring public notification and public hearings.
Yes.
So Judge, maybe, maybe to make a clarification, our recommendation was for the ceiling rate today for your vote, and that would be the .089272. The 4% is the .085242 that likely were to come back to you with in our budget, and the tax rate we're asking you to consider probably in September. But we're asking you today to give us the most flexibility by considering the ceiling rate so that we have some ability to maneuver beneath that.
Wait, the ceiling rate, which is 8%?
The ceiling rate for the town, for the hospital district is at 8%, and that rate is 0.089272.
Man, you had me at 4, but I can't go 8. I mean, I.
Yeah, and I know y'all had a meeting, and I thought y'all were fine with the 4%.
We are, Judge, but the reason we're asked for the ceiling rate was because there's a lot in flux right now, both in terms of, I mean, our budget is set, but y'all says not. And our experience tells us over the years that between the time we set our budget and when you all set yours, there's sometimes some additional things that pop up that need consideration. But if the court feels comfortable with the .085242, we're okay with that. We just want to make sure that we had some room to maneuver with the rate. So that's why we're bringing up the higher rate.
And today's vote is always to vote for the ceiling.
Just for the ceiling. They cannot exceed that, but they can always go lower that.
We work it out later on, so.
On the, actually, when you adopt the rate, that's when you'll go through the process of actually getting down to where they're wanting to be, if, maybe even lower.
So is it, I'm sorry.
My bad, my bad.
So if we set it low, we can't go high, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
So it's better to cap it and then say, we'll work it down.
Because if you have to set a rate, and there's a lot of rules in the tax code that you cannot exceed that without multiple hearings, multiple of this, and there's the, so that's why we try to set a ceiling above what we believe we need, and that's what I believe Johnny's now saying. We want, they wanted to do the voter approved rate of .89272 with their, hopefully, when their, their actual budget adopted, it'll be at 4%, which is a lot lower.
So I'm okay, I mean, just so you, I'm sure everyone wants to weigh in. I'm okay with setting the cap, the ceiling, and then hopefully, everyone can try to work it down further, so.
And commissioners, that, just to remind y'all, that's what we did last year. Y'all adopted the ceiling rate. We came back in with something that was about halfway in between the no new revenue rate and the voter, but I'm just, we're only asking just out of caution because I don't know what's going to come up. And as Dale said, and Commissioner highlighted, we'd like to come in lower than that, but we'd like the room to maneuver in there.
At the end of the day, I mean, still, it'd be up to us to vote on it, yes or no, when we come back. I mean, I know last year was a 9.2 or something like that, and y'all went down to 8.1.
Correct.
Or you down to 8.1. But basically, the 4% is still there. We still can come down to the 4%, you know, if we vote on that, support the 4%, right?
Yes, Commissioner, the 4%, and just so the voters know, that rate, even though we're seeing that we're meeting the requirements of the law by setting us a 4% increase above the no new revenue rate, that 4% basically puts us back at the revenue we had last year.
Last year, yeah, sure.
So I mean, it.
Does it raise it?
The structure changed, but we're talking about the same amount of money as we had last year.
And we able to fund those nonprofit agencies?
Yes. In the version two budget we showed you on Monday.
Everything.
The board voted to go with that budget yesterday.
All right.
Commissioner Chesney, you had some comments.
Yeah, man, you had me excited. I thought I was finally going to vote or something. You wanted me, and now you're popping me up to 8%. I mean, I, that's, I'm struggling with that because I thought this version two, which I actually, was actually even leaning towards giving you, which you know how big a deal that is for me because, you know, even voting for that budget would be huge for me, but y'all have been such a great partner. But now you're coming in asking for this ceiling that's making me a little uncomfortable. If your board has already agreed to the budget, which includes all the programs that we've already had funded, I, that, I'm kind of, that's, I get it. I know what you're saying, safety valve, but is, are we asking for anything else up here that we know of that need to be funded or that you know of, or?
Commissioner, I don't know of anything right now, but our experience in the past is that usually between the time we set a budget and when the final budget is approved and the tax, associated tax rate is adopted, there are changes. And so all we're doing is asking for flexibility. The board is committed unless something comes along that we don't know, either you all or us, know right now. The board's committed to the 4%. But we want to be cautious about the numbers between now and September so that we have room to adjust if need be.
Okay, all right.
In case you want to change it.
I got the change.
We have to do a record vote?
So we, for, so Johnny, I'm going to make sure we, there's, you're recommending a tax rate at the voter approved ceiling rate at 80% at .089272, and that's what they're, you're proposing to, for the proposal rate, not the voter rate, but the proposal rate. So that will need to require a motion and a record vote.
And that is our proposal for purposes of today. We'll be back in September, likely with a lower rate.
I'll make the motion.
I have a motion by Commissioner Gonzalez. I need a second.
So, so are we saying that we can bring it back down?
Yes.
You will have another chance to vote on it.
All you're doing is setting a ceiling and requiring public notification and hearings.
So we can move forward.
Yeah.
So just for the record, Jack, what motion ceiling, the tax ceiling are you setting?
I'm setting the one that's.
The 8%.
The 8%.
089272.
The ceiling, what they can do.
The ceiling.
And that would require a record vote.
I have a motion by Commissioner Gonzalez, a second by Commissioner Mottas. Commissioner Hernandez, how do you vote?
Oh, yes, I agree.
You agree? Commissioner Chesney?
I'm going to abstain.
Abstain? And I was really good with the 4, too, but I will vote just because we come back and have to approve this, so I will vote yes.
Why not? It's a record vote. I can vote how I want. Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Yep. I don't know if you.
That's as nice as I can do on this one. Sorry.
I don't know if you can abstain for a record vote.
Yes, I can.
We, you can abstain for a record vote.
You can do whatever you want on a record vote.
Unless we need a unanimous vote. You can vote anyway. That's the only way it would be.
I've done this a long time. I can abstain only on a record vote.
I know you have.
And I was good, too, with the, yeah. But we do get to come back. This is not giving y'all leeway. We have to vote on this again. So let me be clear to everyone who's listening, anyone that wants to start tearing up our phones. Okay, the next item?
Just for clarification, the vote was 4 to 0 with one abstaining from the vote for the hospital district only, setting a rate of 0.08292, which will require public notification and public hearings. And we'll work over with Johnny on when the public hearings will be.
Dale, I mean, just to confirm, maybe I misheard you. It's .089272.
089272.
272, yes.
Mr. Hip.
Yes, sir.
I just want to make sure. You did say y'all were committed to the 4%?
We are, Commissioner, and all this is, is just a cautious move. Your budget's in flux. Ours is set, but stuff comes up sometimes over the years along the way. But our commitment is to keep it at the 4% unless something develops.
That commitment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
The next item, Your Honor, is for the county, which includes the general fund, the debt service fund, as well as the road fund for the county. As your budget officer, we've gone through several budget hearings. As your budget officer, I'm just going to set the ceiling at the maximum voter approved rate, which is a 3.5% rate, which is 0.252755. Again, 0.252755. And hopefully, after we get to the cuts, when we come and propose a budget to you, we will be lower than that rate, but that's the rate I'm setting as the ceiling.
Do I have a motion on that?
Can I make a motion to, can I make a motion, period? I just make a motion that we, that we vote on the no new tax rate. That's my motion.
The 3.5, the voter, you're saying no on no.
No new rate, no new.
Second.
If you make a motion, I make a second on that.
So is that the number you just mentioned?
No.
No, they're voting on 0%. Zero, the no new tax. So we have a motion and a second and a third, so no more discussion.
We would require a record vote at the rate of .240253. That's the no new revenue tax rate.
This is our ceiling.
No, that's the ceiling, which means that's the bottom. We can't go any higher.
Yeah, we can't go higher.
Can't go lower either.
That's just going back to.
I, I think we need some discussion and some clarification, so if we don't set a high enough ceiling, then that really binds us.
Yes.
And today, it's not the final vote.
Correct.
So I get we're trying to make statements here today, and I may agree with you eventually, but I don't want to tie our hands right now without letting us still work through the budget process. Would you say the budget process is complete at this point?
No. We still got a lot of the, a lot of cuts at that voter, at the no new revenue tax rate. We foresee a significant reduction in reserves.
We, it's like a $3 million more we will need to cut at the no new.
I mean, I hope that we realize as a court, what we're doing today does not give us any flexibility at all. I mean, I get making a statement, but that statement's next month. I may stand by you next month, but you want to just tie our hands today for the sake of making a statement now? This is not the time to do it. If we want to work through this, then let's work through this. But, but at this point, I mean, no one wants to be on a voice record or recorded vote to say, I support the ceiling. But, but that's what part of our job is, is to make a statement of where, where do we want to be? I mean, we don't want to give ourselves some flexibility?
You know, you finished, Commissioner? I'm sorry. I just, it's not about making statements, you know, it's just about what we've gone through already, you know, and the $3 million, to me, is very workable. I mean, we've got monies to get rid of those $3 million, if you really want to go down the line, but.
With the air conditioners on, can you talk in the microphone a little bit? They're saying they're having a hard time hearing. I'm sorry.
I'm just saying, you know, we're not trying to make any statements here today. I'm just saying, this is what we've gone through already. The $3 million, and if we're going to go through the whole nine yards again, and you're going to say, well, I'm going to go back where I was before. So now we're what? We're going back to square one? So what's the purpose of sometimes telling the people, hey, we're going to do all this stuff, and then we don't do it? So it's not about making statements. I think it's just, from what I see, from what I've, what I've gone through, I think the balance on this would be the $3 million, 3 points, whatever it is, is workable. I think that the monies are there. I don't think that we are going to be in a bind for that. You know, we might kick the can once or twice. I don't know. Maybe we don't have to kick the can. I don't know. But we know, we'll work, we'll work on it, and that's, that's why we're here. So I think that we got what we have, and whatever comes up, we just, we've got to learn to do with or without. That's my statement.
Dale, is, and this is based on the budget you're proposing?
Yes.
And my concern is, I'm concerned because I've talked to some other directors of departments, and what caught my attention, like, the DA's office had said that they hadn't requested any monies at all, and they were showing that they had asked for so much. And then I think Ms. Sands also had concerns about her budget, that they were inflated. And I've talked to one other department head, saying they're going through the same thing. They didn't ask for anything, and they're showing it.
Let me explain what's going on, because when, there are some items that the departments do not have any control over, including myself, and that's insurance. Y'all, y'all adopted a windstorm insurance that was a significant increase.
I understand that.
Everybody has to pay for it. The copiers went up in price. Everybody has to pay for it. So everybody's went up. So those were, those balances were there, and some of the items that were required by postage and other stuff that are required because of our contracts require an increase, so we had to put those increases in, whether they were, asked for them or not. And that's why those were, went up.
You had to put them.
We have to.
Showing into those departments, that's what they requested.
Yes.
Okay, without even, you know, even though they didn't, but you had to show it there.
That or we can't, that or we can't pay for the equipment.
No, but I'm saying, the department heads weren't aware that that money was suggested for them, you know.
This happens every year because y'all, y'all increase the insurance rate, y'all increase the balance for our copiers go up because we add more copiers, and our balance goes up. So, so some of these items are always a required increase.
I understand that, but what I'm saying, aren't you supposed to let them know that you're going to put that much, show that much into their?
At some point in time, we do.
Pardon me?
At some point in time, we do.
At some point in time, we do.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I think it's kind of misleading to them and to us, or to me, anyway, because I just, I don't understand, I didn't understand that part, why you were doing it, to balance for the insurance. Okay? And I just want to make sure that they know why. And, uh, I just wanna make sure that they know why those monies are, are showing there in their, in their budget.
Yeah.
Okay, and I think they should be told.
They do, they were, as we give the proposal, we, we do let them know.
Okay, I'm just thinking, Ms. Sands also showed some interest that, uh, her, uh, budget wasn't, uh, kind of inflated.
For those reasons, for the copiers went up, and we, we, some insurance, we, we modified that because it went to the elections and not her department, so we made those corrections, and, and those are now correctly stated.
Well, I understand that, but, uh, again, uh, I believe those department heads should be aware of what's, what you're putting on their.
Yeah.
On the budget, thank you.
So I have a motion and a second to do the no new revenue, no tax increase.
Is, uh, point zero point two four zero two five three, and if you, uh, propose that rate, that will not require any notification and no hearings. And we'll propose a, a, a budget, and it'll be on your September seventeenth, uh, uh, hearing, so, but there will be no more budget hearings.
This is, uh, a motion, oh, Lisa, did you wanna say something about it?
I just wanted to state that the insurance, it is stated in the instructions that are provided to the departments whenever they prepare their budget requests, it does state that there are certain items that the county auditor prepares on their behalf, as those are figures that we have available to us, that the departments don't necessarily have available to them. We, New Oasis County is self-insured, and therefore, whenever the elected officials have public official bonds that are issued whenever they're re-elected, those costs are paid out of the self-insurance fund, and then because we're self-insured, everything that goes out has to replenish that fund, and so those following year after their election, the elected officials are billed for the cost of those bonds. She is the treasurer, as well as the, uh, department head for the elections and county clerk, and because of that reason, Ms. Sands' bond is higher than other public officials' bonds. Unfortunately, that does result in an increase in her budget that she did not request, but we put in on her behalf in order to fund those costs that we know she's going to have the following year for insurance. We prepare the budget for all departments that have insurance, based on the knowledge that we have for car insurance, building insurance, as the rates that you approve in Commissioner's Court are adopted, there was a noted significant increase in policies this year, and that has to be passed on to the departments to fund the following years. And it's all stated in the instructions that are provided to the departments whenever they do their budget requests, which line item budgets the county auditor will prepare on their behalf. So it's not something hidden. And then, as far as the district attorney, her column did show that there was no requested increase, it was the, it was the auditor's request that was the requested increase, and again, that was for items that were outside of her control, because she received a leased vehicle that she didn't previously have, that caused her leased vehicle cost to go up. She also received, uh, they also had insurance for the motor vehicle that went up because they got a leased vehicle, and so whenever your car insurance goes up, we have to increase that insurance line item. So, again, it was all in the budget packet, it's.
I think.
All explained to the department heads at the time they prepared their budget packets.
Well, it, it probably wasn't explained, 'cause they're all, or questioning it, they don't know how it got there, or what?
If, if they chose, I had, um, I gave two different Zoom trainings, one for new employees, um, and then several reoccurring ones that are for, um, uh, re, returning employees that have already done the budget packets, and they would know this, there, so there's a video you can watch, there is written material that is provided that states all of this, and then when and if I meet with them to discuss, it's also discussed at that time if they have a question about it. But, again, I, I give it to them in writing, there's a video, it, there's a video link provided in case they miss the live training where I'm, I'm doing the Zoom live, we also record the Zoom training, so that they could watch it at any time at their leisure and be able to get the same information as if they had attended the Zoom training, they just wouldn't be able to ask the questions. I take phone calls, I'm frequently here till very late at night, taking phone calls and answering emails.
Okay, I know when I first came in, uh, we did have a meeting with the auditor's office, but we were told how to, how we could and couldn't use the P card, I never recalled about what you're talking about, the, the insurance, you know, that.
The, the budget training, um, that would have been with Ms. King, as she's the person that prepares the budget request on your behalf, and I give her that information, I send it to all of the members of Commissioner's Courts and the department heads and elected officials, all of them get it.
I guess we all need to read what you sent us.
It's a lot of information, because I try to cover everything, and so frequently I'm told it's a lot of information, but I try to give it to everybody, people learn in different ways, and so I have hands-on training for people that learn hands-on, I have a video for people that learn by watching someone else do it, and then I have written instruction for those that learn from writing.
Well, thank you for taking all those steps, making sure that, uh, we are informed, but again, uh, it just, uh, caught my attention that this, uh, department heads weren't aware of what that item was there for. So, uh, you've given us the explanation, thank you very much.
You're welcome, sir.
Commissioner Modas has a question.
Yes, please.
I, I just have a question for Dale. So this proposed rate, um, how does, does this factor into, um, our collective bargaining, or does this give us cushion for that, or is that a separate fund, or, I, I, just so I know how my vote shows support for that or not?
Well, as you remember, we, we went through the, uh, several hearings and several, uh, workshops, and I, I did provide you both a, uh, budget estimates for the voter approved rate, as well as the no new tax rate, uh, uh, what you're asking, the, uh, possible value of a collective bargaining agreement, we put some numbers in there, they're, they're in the budget, they're, they can, they're a part of that, so that will make up part of the reduction, uh, reduction of, of, uh, reserves if we do the no new, no new revenue, so it's, it's in, it's in part of it, so yes.
We have money and contingency set aside for that, but if we.
Value for it, yes.
And let me just say, while I am the last person who agrees on tax increases, I am diehard conservative, I believe we make cuts, but guys, we just voted to allow the hospital district, why are we not going, I mean, it's not a vote yet, it is just opening it up for our discussions in case we need it, and if we aren't willing to make more cuts that are necessary, you're really locking our hands in some, we just allowed them to have the ceiling to work on this, are, are they gonna get it? We're gonna come back and vote again, it's not set in stone, this is just opening up for discussion, saying what our ceiling is going to be, and if we vote no right now, um, then we have to go back and cut a lot more thing, it's three million, and, uh, it's, I am not saying we should vote yes for this, 'cause I am not saying that I will vote yes for this when it comes up, but we are locking our hands by saying no when we just told another department that they can have it, uh, it makes no sense to me. Have that at least leeway, but I am.
Judge, I'll go ahead and withdraw my, my second motion.
Thank you.
But this is not.
This is not the final vote, this is not voting for a tax increase, this is just leaving it for us to continue working on our budget cuts and what we would have to do, I hope we don't have to do it, I'm, believe me, I'm conservative, I don't want to vote for any tax increase.
This will give us a leeway either.
This will give us a le, yes, uh-huh.
I'm out, I'll withdraw, I, I, I'll withdraw, for that I would draw my motion, and restate my motion that we go with it.
Thank you, okay, so we have a new motion that just gives us, yes, he is changing his motion to the three point five.
The, the three point five, which is the voter approved rate that was calculated, is point two five two seven five five.
Yes.
If that's what your motion would be.
Right, right.
Yes, yes. Do we have a second?
That's only the ceiling, so.
Second.
Yes, we have a second from Commissioner Hernandez, Commissioner Modas, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Chesney?
No.
And I will vote aye, just on the ceiling, as I said before, for anyone listening, this is not voting to raise yet, this is just allowing us to work on our budgets a little bit longer.
We'll work with, we'll work with Teresa and, and the Commissioner's Court Administration, we will require us to, to publish, publish notice in the paper, publish notice on our website, as well as have a public hearing.
And, and I wanna go on record too, that I agree with, exactly with the judge, that I'm not saying this is it, like, I, I, I've heard what our, I think a consensus of our court has said, and I totally agree, well, let's bring it down as much as we can.
Now, this is just rated as high as we can go, we can definitely decrease it from that level, yes, and my hope is, when we continue going through the process, my, my staff and, and, and Commissioner's Court Administration, as well as the court, finding other items that we can cut, we can try to, try to lower this, and, uh, I'm, I'm seeing some areas where we possibly can, but right now I'm just setting the ceiling.
And, and that's all we wanted to do, is there any other votes that we have to take on this?
Uh, no.
Looks like, no?
All you have to do is, is authorize the publication of the notices.
Did we do, wait, did we do?
Farm to market, was that included? We didn't do.
Do we do farm to market separately?
No, it's all together.
That's all together?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay.
Motion to authorize publishing, uh, publish size, publish size, appropriate notices.
We have a motion to authorize, and a second, I think Commissioner Gonzalez, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, same sign, the motion passes, thank you. Moving on to item number two then, you're through, right Dale, that was all?
That is all, yes, Your Honor.
Yes, receive update on capital projects, available balances, and allocate possibly funds for pending capital projects, Teresa has done this.
Thank you.
Good morning, um, so the document that I just passed out is just a recap of all the attachments that are in the agenda for each series of capital projects that we have, starting from general capital nineteen oh one through the twenty twenty-one COs nineteen twenty-five series. At the top of the sheet, it shows the balances that are available for the court by each series, and at the end, there is twelve point six million dollars available, and then the bottom portion shows the balances that remain in the projects where we've already allocated funds. The total available would be the thirty-six, nine seventy-nine, seven oh three for, for use.
The total unallocated for use, so is the twelve up there, thirty-six says?
The, the twelve is just the court members, your particular balances in your individual projects, and then the bottom part are the balances that remain in projects that we've already moved funds into.
Yeah.
And then if you go to the second page, the second page, um, is an update from the document that was attached to the agenda, because on the twenty twenty-one COs, there's a note at the bottom where I was just trying to show that, at the top, it shows the unallocated being twenty million dollars, that's not actually what's available, because we haven't moved out the remaining funds for the Bob Hall Pier, there's still twelve million dollars that we have not moved into that project. So I wanted to just show the recap to show that Hilltop is completely funded, we came to court, we, we pulled all the monies together, and we actually put those dollars into the project, the same with the animal care facility, those funds are actually within the project, but we have not done that for Bob Hall Pier, so I just wanted to emphasize that, it's not really twenty million dollars that's unallocated available, twelve mil still needs to be pulled out, because it's been allocated for the pier.
Right, so what did you mean, we haven't done it, 'cause we voted to do it?
We haven't, we haven't come to court and taken all the monies that we know, we, we've kinda added monies, like Hurricane Harvey, we moved the, the, uh, the medical examiner facility, but we haven't come to court and stated, okay, here's Bob Hall Pier, here's our total funding, where all the monies can be moved to the project, we've been kinda moving the, the money as we come to court and they get selected or awarded construction, then we allocate the money.
But we, but we have allocated, we have allocated every dollar to Bob Hall Pier.
Right, it's allocated, Commissioner, but it's not in the project, because it hasn't been moved into the project formally.
Because we haven't started construction, or?
Right, I know, but it's the same with Hilltop and Animal Control, we haven't started construction, but the dollars are sitting in the project.
Then, are you saying we should do that for Bob Hall Pier today, so we get it out of the, yes, yes, so we can move forward?
I don't understand this.
We probably have to bring it to court, well.
In other words, we, we have voted to allocate every dollar from COs, insurance proceeds, there was another, uh, ARPA, we, we have had court votes and voted on every single dollar that has been allocated to Bob Hall Pier, so I'm still not understanding what we haven't done that needs to be done, because other than a vote, that's all we normally do.
Yeah, but we don't, well.
Until the project starts construction, which.
Right, but what I'm saying is to move those funds actually into this project, right now, they're still sitting up and unallocated.
But why? 'Cause we voted to allocate them, that's what I'm not getting, we, we have voted in this court to allocate those funds.
Right.
So why are they not allocated?
Well, because we haven't done a recap, like, we only really move the mones, the funds in a project when they start construction, or when contracts are approved in court, we go and actually put those dollars in the project for those encumbrances, and we.
That doesn't make any sense.
Yeah, doesn't make sense, um, it should be everything allocated to the project, Commissioner, I agree with you, because right now it's, it's showing just twenty million, but it's like, but we don't have that, that's right, Teresa?
Right, it's correct, the twelve mil is not in that project.
And it should be.
But how it gets moved over in, for accounting purposes, that's, somebody else does, I mean, we, we vote on things, it's all been voted on, I don't know why we would have to vote on anything else, because it's already been voted on, so why, I, I don't remember coming back and saying, okay, now we're gonna vote to move the money into something else too, we vote to allocate it, and it's allocated.
Because we, we don't move the, the actual funds into the project until the items come to court and it gets approved, like, when, every, like, right now, we have seven million dollars that's encumbered or obligated in that project, so if you look at the Bob Hall Pier project, and the bu, the budget is seven point three million dollars, that's the only amount of money that we've moved, because those are the only contracts that have come to court and been approved. So you're correct, the funds are allocated, but they are not sitting in the project, and I can do a budget change order to move all the monies, what's the matter?
I mean, I guess we need to change the way we do our accounting then, because it's not unallocated, it's, it's, it's already encumbered, so, so like, this is.
It's not encumbered, but it is allocated.
Right, so it's misleading, not on purpose, I get it, but it's misleading to say there's fifty million, or there's this huge number that's not, I don't know what you're saying today, not.
The twenty mil up at the top, it's not that, it's not unallocated.
I asked Teresa to bring this and to do these lists, because I had gone looking for money for the roof, and we had asked what was in the COs, what was left, and she's, it was a total, and I said, we have that much in the COs, and she goes, no, 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 a lot of this is two things. I said, well, we need a better system, 'cause it's hard, I don't know how she keeps it in her head about what hasn't transferred or what, how much we've spent, because we come to court and we vote on something, and none of us have a real clue on how much has already been allocated, so I, we brought this to this attention for this very reason, to figure out a way to make it better, where we're not all scrambling around, and it's a very clear item on the list, where you know exactly how much you have that hasn't been allocated, how much we have that we can spend, but the, this came about when we started looking for something, and it's very confusing, you're absolutely right.
Okay, so what I'm seeing, Teresa, then is, at the, on page one, the only thing that's really unallocated, and maybe we need to have different terminology, the only thing that's unallocated, and I'm gonna ask what it is, is this seven point three million at the top, because these other funds have, have been allocated to commissioners, to the judge, for, for precinct projects, things of that nature, so what's the seven point three, or, I guess it's seven point six four two two seven, what is that?
That amount is the remaining amount that's on, um, um, the nineteen twenty-five series, it, it backs out the twelve million dollars that ha, that I have not moved for Bob Hall Pier, so when I back it out, that's the true amount, that's unallocated, that y'all can still create projects, whatever you wanna do.
And that's from what?
That's backing out.
No, 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 that's, that's from the twenty. No, no, no. That's, that's from the 2021 COs?
2021 COs, the seven is the, the balance that's available in the 2021 COs after I reduce the balance that I have not moved to Bob Hall Pier.
So how did, how did we, how have we, how does that happen? Because we, we allocated, I thought we had allocated all of those 2021 COs either to Commissioner, Judge, or projects.
Well, we have a CIP list, right? But we don't move the funds into the projects until the projects come forward. So.
Meaning, I didn't realize that we had any unallocated, and when I say unallocated, I'm going to say unvoted. Let's change that because we're having a confusing conversation here. That's, you're telling, you're telling this court that there's 7.6 million dollars of unvoted on money from the 2021 COs?
It's not unvoted, Commissioner. We have CIP projects, but we haven't moved forward with it. So that would be?
Well, has it been assigned to something else?
No, we haven't done anything with it.
Well, that's unvoted. Meaning, it hasn't been assigned to a project.
It could be voted on today for another project.
I think so, because, I mean, because you have a CIP list, right? And whatever that list total. And if we would, like, when we do the CIP, if we actually go in and move those funds, like you're saying, they've been allocated. We actually create a project and move those dollars there, then when we create new projects, like with the medical examiner. So the 4 million dollars from the medical examiner, then I could show the medical examiner monies came out, it went here, it went there. We don't move any of the monies. All the monies is sitting in unallocated until we go to court, and then I can, I can do my project change order.
I understand, but I'm going to try to ask this again because, man, you know I love you, but you're really confusing the heck out of me today. So what I'm asking you is, has this 7.6 million been assigned to a project? Like, has it been assigned like Bob Hall? Has it been assigned like the Hilltop? Has it been assigned like the medical examiner? Well, no, I'm saying those things have all been assigned, so that money is not available. Is this unassigned money or not? And I don't know how, I'm trying to come up with a term that?
Okay, well.
That, that, because?
I would say that it's assigned according to the CIP list.
But we haven't voted on a specific project, so it's not assigned.
So it's not assigned.
It's not assigned. What has it been assigned to? What project?
We have the CIP list that allocated.
Until we vote on it, until we vote to assign, it's not assigned.
Okay, then it's not.
We've, we've got, we've got a 200 million dollar CIP project. Okay, well, we know 7 million isn't going to cover 200 million. We have voted to prioritize projects with our COs in the past, is how we've always done it. Medical examiner, Hilltop, Bob Hall Pier. All those projects have been voted on by this court, decided, so that money is off the table. Is this money off the table because it's been assigned to a specific project or not?
And the CIP?
Because we got, if it hasn't, then we can vote for it. If it, if it hasn't been assigned, if it's been assigned to something else, then that's not available money either.
Excuse me, Teresa?
Yes, sir.
I think what I understand is you leave this money unassigned, and from, from what I've seen in the past, this is where you might get money in case you need money from, for somewhere else?
That's correct. It comes from this, this pot right here.
That's okay.
I think the new process needs to be, when we vote to allocate something, it, the court approves it, this budget change order needs to go into a fund for that project. We, you should automatically transfer the funds where they're not sitting there and we see. That's what, then, I think that's what we hope to get out of this meeting today, where we didn't have this confusion. If, if the court votes to approve a project with these funds, then you should automatically transfer those funds instead of us coming back. You should create a?
And I think we've assigned, I think we have assigned every single dollar. We had a 50 million dollar CO. That's where this started. We have, I remember this. We voted on 50 million dollars worth of projects, which means there should be not one dollar unassigned from that CO. So if we go back, I think this is completely not correct because we voted on all those projects. We, we, we went through it. I remember going through it, and we assigned every dollar of the 50 million dollar CO that we passed, and we've assigned it all. So I don't see how there's any dollars available. Zero.
So Commissioner, we're saying the same thing. Because you're correct, we did assign according to the CIP list. But if you look at this, these, these projects that are, that are allocated right now are not 50 million dollars of all the projects that we've, that we've done.
But that didn't mean it hadn't been assigned. This, I mean, this is, we don't, in other words, we can't, if we take this 7.6 million, we're taking it from another project that we've already voted on, and we need to know, okay, then we need to, that's what I've been asking you.
Okay.
Is the whole time is, th, this is not available money. It's available only if we pull it away from other projects. That's not available. So that, this money is not available.
Those monies are already tied to that one project, and I have one more question.
Yes, sir.
Okay. As I recall, on the Hilltop, we started at 20 million, and then we brought it down to 14 million. And I thought the last number we agreed on was 9 million, you know?
It was.
So.
Yeah, David, David started at 20 million. The court never started at 20. David Richter started at 20, remember? He had his big, yeah.
And I was in agreeance, you know, to do that.
Okay.
So I'm saying now, I see 8 million, you know, but I was under the assumption that we agreed on 9 million. And if, you know, if I'm wrong, can you show me different?
You're, um.
Why?
Yeah, they're in different series. They're in, they're all over the place. It's in Hurricane Harvey monies, it's 2021 COs. This might be the 2019. This is just your portion that's coming from the 2021 COs. So I can give you that sheet that shows the, the, the exact total, and I believe you're correct. It's like 9. Something.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is not, it's 9, Commissioner. It's somewhere else. It's 9. You're right. You're right.
But basically, we should, when we allocate money for anything, create a project account, and that money should automatically be transferred over there. Because we're getting into things like this where we're looking for money and nobody knows what has, what's still holding out there. So we go back and look at the 50 million you're talking about, see what is left, what hasn't been done, what possibly got scrapped or is being done. But that's the reason we brought this here, because it is such a crazy mess. When I went looking for money with this, it was like, we have to wait till it comes back to court, and we voted on this, and she has it in her head. And nobody can keep up with what we do in here on a regular basis, voting and changing. I'm sorry, guys, that's on us too. But once we vote to move a project forward and allocate that money, it should automatically from the, from the auditor's office be transferred into a separate account for that project.
So what I can do then, Judge, is I'll take the, uh, this list, and then I'll go through the CIP lists for all the projects that we haven't actually reallocated the funds, moved the balance from Bob Hall Pier into this project, and then we'll, we should have zero unallocated up at the top. Yes?
Yeah, and Commissioner Chesney is, is correct on the issue. When, if you remember, when we go for these bond issues, the bonding companies want us to provide them a list of what we plan to use the funds for.
Right.
And that's where we say we did this, this, and this. We, we were in excess of more than 50. We narrowed it down to 50. Now, some of these items that actually are processed are a little bit different from what we, we explained, so that's where there might be a little bit of differences. But as the Commissioner's saying, these have already been allocated. We just need to make sure which ones are not there and which ones can be changed.
Yeah. And if we voted on these, then we need to go ahead and transfer this over. So we're not duplicating or overspending what we don't have.
A lot of this is our old system because of, as, as Commissioner was saying, uh, there's 9 million for the Hilltop, but you have to look in four different spots. When our new system comes in, you'll have one project, you know where all the funding sources are. So it will, it'll be easier to track.
So what I'm trying to understand, uh, by the time you get done, a Hilltop will reflect that we have 9 million allocated Hilltop.
Yes, sir.
It's the same as Bob Hall. There's like three or four different funding sources from Bob Hall. It's all over the, we had a scraping claw to make it work.
And you got some money, Commissioner, don't worry about it.
Yeah.
Thank you, Teresa.
Thank you, Teresa. Appreciate you.
We appreciate it. It's very confusing.
Make up the 9.
Yes. On, um, any other questions on that, guys? I think she's going to come back with us. Item number three then, moving on. Authorized escrow, escrow disbursement request number 15. And this is payments 21, 22, and 23 to ABM. I know we had another notice to cure, and we got with both the ABM and Public Works, and these are, have been approved by Juan and myself for payment. I make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. I, I'm just, I know Public Works approved this, and I'm just hoping that we all, we're going in the right direction with ABM. Uh, you know, we've had so much problems in the past, and, uh, and then now, I don't want to come back down at the end of the road and say, well, you know what, this wasn't done right, or this isn't. I mean, I just hope everything that we're doing is to specs, and that we're not going to come back and say, you know what, it wasn't done right. And that, that, that's what worries me, right? At the end.
I agree.
And we can't, we can't do this at the end. We got to start doing, we got to do it now.
Well, I will tell you, on these three invoices that were held up, the reason they were held up at first in Public Works had nothing to do with each one of these invoices. It had to do with another job that was done over at the annex. So that what was charged on these three invoices were nothing about their concern is the reason they were okay moving forward. And we did check with the jail, and the jail and the sheriff, they were very happy with the progress so far. Yes?
How about juvenile? You already got, do you already get through with the juvenile?
There's one here. Are they through? Can you speak in, if they're saying with camp here again? I am not sure if they are finished totally with the juvenile.
I think that was part of this lump sum that we're talking about. In the parking lot, the juvenile, the front and the back.
But that's not part of these three invoices. One is the steam boilers, and it says parking for something. There is a, and the air handler units are 22 and 23, and those are in the jail, the other invoices that are out.
And those are okay, Sheriff said?
And the sheriff said yes. Yes, we did contact them before we moved forward. Yes.
Would you like to make sure the part, the parking, what's the name of it?
Um, excuse me, Judge.
Go ahead.
Did, uh, somebody inspect the work, like the, the air handlers and things, something like that?
They're still working on these, but, um, they, I mean, they're still doing more air handlers. They're actually changing to a double shift now because we also have an October deadline that they have to be finished. So, um, they have two shifts going in now from Public Works as well to try to meet that demand.
There's one.
One, yes. On the probation off, or the juvenile office, so parking, is that finished yet?
Yes, ma'am, the parking lot's complete.
The parking lot is finished.
Front and back?
Yes.
Yes, sir. My understanding it is complete.
And isn't that part of this right here, Juan?
Uh, if, if it's part of it, Commissioner, it should be in one of those nine items under, uh, juvenile or Galahad building.
I'm, uh.
I don't have it in front of me, but?
Invoice number 21 says steam boilers and parking. Would that be part of that?
The parking is the one, Judge.
Is part of that, yes. So this is part of that. Yes.
Okay. All right.
Thank you, Judge. Thanks, Commissioner.
Thank you, Juan.
Um, we had a motion and a second. Um, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. And the motion passes. Moving on to, um, item number four. Discuss and consider execution of notification of 78,077 dollars funding for Street Improvement Fund as presented by the RTA. Item number four.
Yes, Judge. This is just what's up, then it's going to be 15,615 to each Commissioner.
Move second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Item number five. Discuss and consider selection of ICE for engineering services under master service, services contract in the Robstown North Drainage Improvements. Uh, this, Commissioner Matas is yours.
Yes, Judge.
And it's just selecting your engineering from our, and this is for your CDBG, uh?
Yes, it's a CDBG MIT mod, uh, funding, and so this is just to, to begin the process for the Robstown area. And then that's a, uh,
I make the motion.
companion item for item six as well.
Second.
Oh, did you make a motion? I'm sorry.
I did. Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. Um, item number six is the same, just selecting Adura for the, um, master service contract with the CDBG Clarkwood, and?
Yes, Judge, in court. That's the same thing, and this is to help the Clarkwood area, this Corpus Christi area that kind of bounds rural area.
Making the motion on second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Item number seven is discuss and consider allocating 275 from precinct four ARPA designated funds to the London Drainage related to widening the existing drainage structure between South Prairie and Rabbit Run. Commissioner Chesney?
Uh, Judge, thank you. This is a project that I have vetted with Lulu, and as indicated, this does, uh, meet the ARPA rules in regards to improving drainage in the London area. I'd currently, or I had allocated 1.5 million dollars of my precinct four allocation to the London Drainage, and this is moving 275,000 of that 1.5 million into this specific project and to set up this specific project. Uh, and it also is, uh, has a consideration in selection of frees and nickels for engineering services under the master services contract to be paid out from that 275,000 dollars. So I would make a motion that this passes.
Is that a dual motion for selection? We have to do two separate?
For the whole thing, yes. No, it's, I mean, it's, I would move that we allocate 275,000 from precinct four ARPA funds from the 1.5 million previously designated, and that freeze nickels is chosen for the engineering services as per the rules.
I'll second that motion. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Moving on to item number eight. Discuss and consider the selection of Govan Development Engineering Services for, um, the master service contract for the Hazel Basemar Improvement Project. And Commissioner Hernandez, I think this is yours.
Uh, yes, Judge, thank you. Yes, I, I, I want to, uh, the Govan Development Group to, to the engineer there at Hazel.
Is that your motion?
That's my motion, yes.
Second that. Um, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Item number nine is yours. Also, receive updated ARPA balances for precincts and countywide projects. Maybe that's everybody. Discuss and consider eligibility requirements for sub-awards to sub-recipients. Discuss and consider taking action regarding the allocation plans, processes of the American Rescue Plan Act funds for the following project. And that is the Oasis County Water Control and Improvement District Number Five, Banketti.
Yes, Judge, I also agree with this one. And I make a motion.
All right, so wait, what are we doing?
There's several, I think Lulu maybe needs to enlighten us on which, are we unallocating this? Yeah. We have a motion and a second for discussion.
Yes, there was a risk assessment conducted for DOLICID number five. And, um, so we're here to present that the eligibility requirements were not met. And so I'm requesting from the court, from the rule of the court, what decision you want to make.
So was your motion, Commissioner Hernandez, to unallocate, or is that what you were?
No, Judge, I would still, uh, would like for Lulu to give us time so we can find a way how we can help these people, get this project done. Uh, I think it would be allocated back to, the county would be doing the work. Can that be done?
I'm sorry, I repeat that again.
If the county's doing the work.
No.
In, in, in Banketti, no. That's not allowed.
No? Thought you told me it was.
For drainage on county road.
Okay.
So I don't understand. If this doesn't qualify, this is one of many that we've had to deal with.
Correct.
We've unallocated every other one.
Was, this was designated just specifically for Banketti, for their?
All right, there was others that were allocated to other entities' projects, and I'm going back to the judge's argument on this, that we've started, we've, if they're sub-recipients and they don't qualify, we have, we have millions of dollars of needs on our own. So I, I, I mean, I don't see how we can keep a million dollars hanging around when we don't have enough money for our roof. I mean, so I, I don't, I mean, I, I, I can't support continuing to, to just leave this million dollars hanging out there if they don't qualify.
What I'm asking is, do we have to agree right now that, to pull that money away, or do we have time to? What I'm asking is, do we have to agree right now that, to pull that money away, or do we have time to try?
We can unallocate it right now, based on, on, on their eligibility, eligibility requirements they do not meet at all. WCID does not meet those requirements.
I mean, and, I mean, and you're not the lawyer, but what you're telling us is this is an illegal allocation at this point. I, I mean.
Well, it'll be sitting there for a while, and if we don't have that paperwork, it's going to sit there and we're going to lose that money.
How, how long do we have before we know we lose the money? We've still got time, don't we?
We have to obligate all the funds December 31st, 2024, on the last commissioner's court for that month.
And I would also remind everyone that some of the projects we have moved forward on and allocated and selected engineers and now have still not gone out for bid for work to start, and I'm, I'm almost into a year of mine.
We've been sitting on this money for a year.
Very slow project.
Well, Lulu, all I'm saying is, I've tried to help this community.
I reached out to them as well, and they're non-receptive.
They need it, and again, I guess I won't have to agree that if they don't qualify, because they don't, haven't given you the information you asked for. We have to do what we have to do, you know, and that's unallocated, I guess. And I hope we put it to good use, you know.
So are you amending your motion then?
Uh, I'm going to have to, Judge, yes, I am.
Yes, okay. So we have, and you're withdrawing your motion, your second, I guess, Commissioner Matas. We have an amended motion to unallocate from the Oasis County Water Control and Improvement District, number five, the $1 million at the advice of our legal and ARPA representative. So do you, are you seconding the motion then?
I, I said one, I mean, these people really need the help, okay, with this problem. We were supposed to have a meeting with them, you know, and I'm hoping in that meeting that we were going to have, they would give us better information or whether maybe that would help qualify. I understand we need the money, and I think I've also given some monies for the roof. But I really would like to have one more meeting with Banquetti and find out if they really, you know, don't have the desire or can't do what they're supposed to be, to, supposed to be doing to give us the information that we need to help them.
So you're changing back your motion to not allocate?
Judge, I, I just want to, I just want to give these people the, the opportunity.
Okay, so.
But what is, okay.
Yeah, wait, wait.
Like, I don't know what that means, because if you've reached out to them and you've tried, and you've done everything you can do, and she's done everything she can do, uh, and, and you're saying there's no way to make them qualify?
They don't have a SAM.gov, first of all. That's mandatory.
They don't have a what?
SAM.gov.
What, I'm sorry, what is that?
Oh, it's a federal, yes, that's a federal word.
Federal obligation.
Right.
Right, and, and so with a million dollars, even if the project did qualify, which it doesn't, is that going to complete the project? Because my understanding, this was just a partial also on, on all these ones we did.
Even, even if we allocate $1, that SAM.gov is mandatory.
I get it. Let's say they have a SAM Doug Gov, SAM.
Gov.
Sorry. Does this million dollars, you know, because that's the other thing that we've had, we've heard on these discussions is, it has to complete the project. It has to be the whole project. Is this the whole project, or is this just?
This is a portion of a project.
So what's the total cost of the project?
That I'm not.
But more than a million dollars?
More than a million.
Do they have money to put into this anyway?
I wouldn't know, because I have not received their financial statements.
And that's part of one of the requirements that you're required to present with these projects.
I don't have their, their net position.
The only reason I'm asking is because in Banquetti, you only have two people in charge of that water district. And they, it's not a full-time job for them. You know, they work at other jobs, you know, and they do this, I guess, whenever they can, and they don't meet on a regular basis, but again, if it's going to be that hard for them to accomplish what I want to help them accomplish, and I think we've given them, you know, enough time to do this, so again, I remove my motion in.
This allocation was done in, on July 6th, 2022, so it's been over a year.
It's been over a year, and it hasn't been.
Documented.
Judge, I would make the motion then that we unallocate this money to the Oasis County Water Control Improvement District, number five, and reallocate it to Oasis County ARPA funds.
Remaining balance.
Remaining balance based on non-compliance and, and based on not being a qualified project.
Okay. We have a motion. Do I have a second?
I guess I'll be the second.
Thank you, Commissioner Hernandez. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign.
Judge, would it be appropriate at this point to, since it's, I guess it's, to, to reallocate it at this point to, to, like the, you know, we've talked about the roof project, we've talked about, you know, I mean, that's, I mean, I'm, I don't remember where we are on that, but I would think we need to, and we're going to have to get, we're going to have to come, we're going to have to, you know, even our allocations, like, we've got to get enough to finish it, right? So it's eight to $10 million roof project.
How much is left on, because this says receive balances, how, what is, with this million, what would that put us at in the county with unallocated ARPA funds?
So in order for me to get a, a full amount of item agenda 10 would need to be discussed as well.
10?
Yes.
Okay, well, it's, um, since it's ARPA, we can do all of that at the same time. We can bring that up. Discuss and consider American Rescue Plan, remain allocated funds to the nonprofit fiscal recovery assistance program.
Well, hang on, what was the answer on the roof? I mean, I'm sorry, what's the answer on the, because if I remember right, we had about 2.5 million left the last time we did this, is that, and then we, because we allocated all the money to the plumbing, or not all, but to, to complete the plumbing project, and my remembrance was that left us about two and a half-ish million of ARPA funds left, so wouldn't this make it 3.5? And that, and if we just went ahead and allocated this and what we have remaining to the roof?
And don't forget my savings on the ME.
Yeah, we haven't done that one yet, yeah. I mean, no, we haven't, you're right.
So countywide remaining balance with the unallocation of a million, we would have four currently, or just for countywide.
And since I've had my unallocated, you know, lesson today, that is not included, that is not inclusive of, of funds that commissioners and the judge have, right? That, that, you're not counting that as remaining.
No.
You're saying unassigned. My new word is unassigned.
Right, so this.
Okay.
Be clear.
The shade in, in pink, or whatever color you, you want to call it, that's the total amount from all the precincts and county judge.
Okay, so what's, so so then the amount is what this, this remaining ARPA balance in the blue for countywide projects is 3,32,255,86.
Plus a million.
Plus a million. Okay, so then if we say today, since we've done this, if, that we want to make a motion to allocate the remaining amount that we have now, and you may have some later, I get it, to the roof, we could, we could put about $4 million towards that roof project, and hopefully that would be something that would, we could complete the project with. If not, then we got to find more, I get it, but I mean, we know we, we have a lot on that roof.
If we do a new roof, we're told by Public Works, it would be 12 million.
Right, but if we.
We're working on something else.
Yeah, I know.
Right, but there's other, my understanding, there's other things in works that, but, but my point is, we, let's get this allocated.
We can allocate this to that, yes, yes.
Allocate, assign, whatever y'all want to call it.
Yeah.
So my motion would be that we, that we allocate the remaining ARPA balance for countywide projects in the amount approximately of 4,32,255,86 towards the Oasis County House roof project.
If that is the will of the court.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. The remaining funds unallocated in the ARPA.
Right, now I know.
Non-commissioners, non, they're private funds. This is only the remaining balance that is unallocated, yes.
Right, and I know that, I know Commissioner Matas is going to do something at some point with, since we were down to two MEs, and Commissioners Alice has something on.
I think we're all, we all have some other things we're going to do.
But for now, then that's, so now we are at zero balance on countywide remaining ARPA project.
Yes, yes. And item number 10 we brought up, discuss and consider, is this your item? Lulu, the American Rescue Plan Act, remaining allocated funds to the nonprofit fiscal recovery assistance program.
That is correct.
Yes, and what is that?
Uh, those monies were for nonprofit organizations who met all the qualifications.
These were the beneficiaries that we cut off the 49,000 because we didn't have any applicants, and then we were getting down to the county needed the funds ourselves to take care of projects, so we just closed off the application process. This, we didn't turn anybody down that had started their application, but we didn't allow any new ones, so yes.
How much is left? Two something, 280?
265, it says on here.
216.
Oh, 216, this balance says 265 on this paper, but I would make the motion then that we also and move those funds into our balance on our roof, the countywide ARPA allocations. We have a motion and a second, and I think you understand that motion, right?
The remaining, the remaining nonprofits funds.
216 from the nonprofits would also go towards.
Well, but this says 265, so I would just.
Yeah, okay.
Let's just use the remaining amount.
Remaining and not an amount, yes.
The remaining unallocated nonprofit amount.
Yes, nonprofit as of today, and those were the, just the beneficiaries that we were giving the 49,000 to each one individually. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes.
So Lulu, we're counting on you to keep track of where this, these assignments are going, right? Because you now are going to move all this over, and it's going to show it in the little project bucket somewhere, okay?
That is correct.
Thank you, Lulu. I guess we are at item number 11, discuss and consider establishing the early voting polling locations for the November 7th, 2023 constitutional election, and that would be you, Care.
We have the locations. We have an election coming up on November 7th, and we'll bring you all the information of times and dates and.
The locations.
But you have the locations in front of you.
So move, second.
We have a motion and a second. And all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes, thank you. Item number 12, discuss and consider approval, approval of Election Day Vote Centers for the November 7th, 2023 constitutional election. We want to approve the Election Day Vote Centers and authorize the county clerk to add more locations as needed and to ensure compliance with the Texas Election Code 32 dot 002. And I'll make that motion.
Wait, which?
Make the motion to approve the Election Day Vote Centers and authorize the county clerk to add more locations as needed and to ensure compliance while doing this with the Texas Election Code 32 dot 002. And we have a second. Commissioner Hernandez seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. Um, the motion passes. Item number 14, discuss and consider upcoming commissioners' court meetings, dates, budget workshop dates, and related matters. Any more? Are we needing to add budget workshops in here?
We will have to add the public hearing we have to have. We'll work with Teresa to get you the, the dates required, because there are some certain dates required by the law.
Um, are we going to need to have any meetings next week or anything? I know they, with this.
There are some additional items to talk about. We may want to have another, another budget workshop, because there are some still items that, that I need to work with several commissioners on, some, some items. Do we have to have the whole court? Probably not. Uh, we can go work through several of the items that we have to, to show you. Here's what the, the departments have requested. Here are the percentage cuts they have. Here's additional items for possible cuts that I've been working with a few of the commissioners on. Judge, I know you and I and some of the other, we'll have a meeting on Friday. We can, we can discuss that, but actually having another budget workshop, I don't believe is necessary. I can work with each commissioner individually if I need to.
Even with the sounds of the will of the court this morning, with those other votes where we have 3 million more that we're looking at now that we're going to be.
Well, since y'all actually approved the posting of the, the vote approved rate, I can still work some cuts in and get a little, little rate below that, but if we do go to no new revenue tax, that will require a significant more cuts.
It sounded like this court was going to no new revenue is why I'm saying I think we need another budget workshop.
That could be that if we do not have additional cuts, then that may be a loss of reserves.
You know.
Yeah.
Possible.
When we say cuts, let's clarify this. Cuts could be anything where we move monies around from separate, separate areas.
Where right now, these cuts have to be actual costs. They can't be with budgets.
At the point we are now.
Hold on. I just want to make sure and clear for the people out there, the department heads and, you know, elected officials and everybody else, that they understand when we say cut, doesn't mean, doesn't mean to make cuts. It can be moving money around that we have. You know, we, they can, like the interest, and we got the 5, 1115 waiver, we got other areas, the contingency. Again, we need to look at those before we look at cuts. Uh, you know, because I don't know what you mean when you say cuts. You know, you're saying cut departments? Well, I'm not one for that, right? But I think we need to start from the top, and useful we have at the top. So, I mean, I just want to make that very clear, that there is monies that we can move around. You know, whatever you want to call it, that we need to move those monies around before we do anything else. Got to take care of our people, got to take care of employees, you know, that's what, that's what we have to do.
Wait, okay, so I'm sorry, I had to go to the bathroom. What, I don't know what predicated that right there, so.
We're just talking about if we need another budget workshop for the court, where I was saying I can work with commissioners individually, but, you know, if we, if it was almost sound like the almost will of court to do the no new revenue tax, we do that, additional work would need to be done, because just by changing the budget will, will not affect the loss of revenue. That would actually have to get into cutting actual, actual numbers, whether.
So we're, we're just on the discuss upcoming meetings?
If we're going to have another.
What is, what did I miss?
Discussing whether we, we need another budget workshop.
Okay, I was like, oh, I didn't see, I don't see this on the agenda.
I know we need a, we do need a public hearing, and that's, we'll, we'll have to work with Teresa on the, the calendar says when these have to be. And we'll make sure those are done, but we, do we need a budget workshop between that period of time? Depend on, on if we decide that that's where we're trending, then I would probably say we probably need to.
Right about Monday, the 28th.
Okay, let's hold on for a second. So I don't know that I agree with that, and I'll tell you why. Because as of yet, in my opinion, we've reached not a lot of consensus at these budget workshops. So I don't want to sit here for another three or four hours, and we all just nod our heads, and then we don't, and we leave, and we don't have any consensus, because we haven't given you much direction.
Correct.
And, and that's, and that's not a, a critique. That's just because this budget has been really hard to figure out and how to do, right? So I get it. We're all kind of like, nobody wants to cut people, right? And, and I, I still think there are a lot of non-people cuts that can be made, vacancies and, you know, consolidation and moving people around, and I, you know, I've thrown that out several times, and nobody's rendered an opinion pro or con, and I get it, because everybody needs to think about it. So I don't know if we need another budget workshop, but just maybe we need to know that on September 13th, we're going to have to make a lot of hard-ass decisions and just go in and make them, and, and that's just the way it is. And excuse my French, but I mean, I've, I've used words I don't usually word, use a lot of times here, because this has been a horrible experience. So I don't know that we need another budget workshop that we can't vote on, because we're, we're not, we're, we're all so worried about, you know, what we say and how it's said, except me, and I shouldn't probably say some of what I say, I get it, but it is what it is. So I don't know that we need another budget workshop. I just think we're going to need to chunk out a time, that it's going to be a long day on the 13th, limit our agenda on that day to non-essential stuff, I mean, to only essential stuff. And just know, we're going to spend a long time on the 13th working our way through this, like we've never, like, like I haven't done in nine years that I've been on this court, but that's okay, because I haven't seen a budget like this in the 16 that I've done between here and the city council. So I, I don't think we need another one, Judge. I'll be honest. I, I, others may feel differently, and I'll come if y'all want to come, but you know, we're going to have to, we're going to have to spend a ton of time on the 13th doing this, and we're not getting you, and I get that's going to be hard for you, Dale, because we're going to be giving you stuff on the fly, but I don't know, I don't, I don't know what else to do, so.
As you're, as you're saying, Commissioner, like, so as we, we've gone through our budget workshops, sometime we don't have a clear direction, and, and my staff and I, working with, with Teresa and I, they'll, they'll consider what we believe the court's direction will be. We'll provide you a proposed budget, and at that time, like you said, on the 13th, or if that's the date for the selection, y'all can amend that to, to wherever, however you want, and, and to get the final number. But as you know, the law says, once we start, we can't stop.
No, I get it, and, and here's the deal. I think all of us have said clearly, we don't want to cut people. We've all, we've all said clearly, I think, we, we'd rather look at vacancies, we'd rather look at consolidation and moving people into positions that are available. We've all, you know, so we've given you some direction.
Yes, and some of the items we've had from the, the cuts from the departments that. Yes. And some of the items we've had from the, the cuts from the departments that, that submitted some either freezing a position or deleting some positions, majority of those that are frozen and deleted are vacancies.
Right. And, and I, and I think that's, that's fair. I mean, I don't, I don't want, you know, I don't, I'm hoping no department head started with a submission of people, that they started with vacancies and fees and subscript, you know, things that, that are non-people related, right? But I don't know, and I've got to kind of break down everything that's been incent. I'd still like to, what I'd still like to see is all the budget departments. And a percentage, I'd ask Dale.
Yes, we're working on that, yes.
See what budget, you know, because it's not fair if one, if ten departments submitted, I get it, it's apples and apples. Let's say ten statutory departments submitted huge cuts and some didn't, or ten non-statutory, you know. So we've got to kind of look at all that and, and be fair and equitable too. And, but there ha, there will have to be, there still have to be cuts to this budget. They don't have to be necessarily a lot of people, I don't think, because we have two hundred and one vacancies.
Yes.
I mean, you literally could, you want to make it real simple, you could say, we're going to cut a hundred vacant, freeze, delete, whatever term we want to use. We cut a hundred, that's five million bucks right there, you know, I mean, and I get it, that has some effect down the road, but I just don't, I think, you know, I don't.
It might be best for you to meet with us individually if we need to have a meeting. If anyone wants to meet with you, then we'll just do an individual commissioners. And then the thirteenth, we'll get back together.
And if it's a very high topic, I need to make sure I, I, I work with maybe a few of you, but I need to make sure I don't violate the open means rules, so.
Yes, yes.
So that, that'll be definitely a consideration, but I'll, I'll try to put in the will of the court on what I believe the budget proposal will be when I draft the proposed rate that had to be filed on the seventh.
Okay.
Excuse me, Dale.
Yes.
When you talk about the budget, are you including the twelve million for the roof of the courthouse?
No.
You're not including that?
No, that's capital outlay. We don't, we don't, you don't budget capital outlay.
Okay, but you will consider the alternative if we go a cheaper way to fix the roof?
That's general fund, Dale. That's not general fund.
That's not general fund.
But again. Because, because most times your grants and your capital projects, items exceed budget cycles. Y'all never really vote on this, because you've already allocated funds for the grants, already allocated funds for these projects. So the capital projects and the grants are never a budget item to discuss. Just your operating funds, which is the general fund, your, your fairgrounds, your library, your airport, your inland parks, coastal parks, and those others that are operational funds, yes.
Okay, because, you know, several times I've heard the roof being mentioned here, and I just want to make sure that if we go the other route, that won't be as expensive as, you know, fixing the total roof.
The only way we'll be getting the budget is if, if you decide to spend a general fund for the roof.
And we won't, we'll use, and, yes. So Teresa, did you want to say?
Yes, um, so in two thousand eighteen, nineteen, when we adopted the budget, we had specific agenda items that required approval from the court to know what we needed to include or not. So if it's going to be like a lean that day, it's going to be strictly based on the budget, then is there an objection to putting, submitting that agenda? Like specific items, you know, the additional cuts and things that you may want to do to put them where you actually have to vote on them, so they will know if they're in or out?
Yes.
It's kind of like the decision list, but you couldn't really vote on it.
You mean on the thirteenth?
Put it on the agenda.
Yeah, on the thirteenth, yes.
That's correct. And we've done that in the past.
I mean, I think you should.
For, for your consideration, though, that those items you're talking about can be on a list, but they will already be in the proposed budget, and those will be items that you'll take out or add.
Yeah, it's kind of like a line item.
We don't have a list. We may not realize, and the public may not realize until the dust is settled. And then the next day, oh my gosh, I didn't realize my vote meant this for that. And, and so having that list, I think, is the best way to go about it. So everyone clearly understands where we're at. And if I can ask, that maybe on the day of, we don't maybe need him till then, is to have, not knowing on Zoom, right? I know he's busy, but we, if, if we do go or if we have to tap into, say, our reserves or anything, what does that mean? Because I always remember, he shows us where we're at as far as our ranking in the state, and we're like twenty-fifth as far as our current reserve balance.
We're already below what he wants us to have, so, yes.
So that's just, if we go that route, and that's majority of court, okay, but just as long as we're aware of where that stands. So I, everything we can have listed, and if he can be there, that's good for me.
That's great.
I'll reach out, I'll reach out to Noah on, on, just to make sure we're on the same level on what we consider, what our expectation of, of, of what we believe our reserves will be next year and what, what the budget will be. We'll make sure he's, he's aware of that.
Is it, is it a fair process, since we have not given a lot of consensus direction, understandably so, to say, whatever you meet with us, you put in everything all of us suggest, and then we can take it out, as John said, or someone said, in other words, like, and meaning it, that, that could change, right? So, so if I give you six things, and Joe gives you six things, and John, and Robert, and Connie, and everybody gives you six things, and, and Joe takes out, gets the court to take out three of mine, and I get, then that's going to affect it. But at least then we can start with something, and we can vote it up or down.
That's correct.
Any, I mean, anybody have a problem with that? That everybody can put in whatever they think needs to happen on consolidation or, or cuts?
That we can vote up or down, so then we move forward.
And then that's in the budget, and then you'll have, you know, if, if someone takes out someone's off the list, then we got to figure out where we're going to make it up if we have to.
We'll have no here for.
Right.
We'll have no here for the next meeting, though.
Okay, so we're not going to have a meeting until our regular scheduled meeting. No additional meetings are necessary, so.
Like I said, we still need to work with Teresa when the required date for the public hearing. We still require the public hearing.
Okay.
So do we need to do that today? Microphone, microphone.
Microphone.
But will you also give me an electronic copy, so, because it has to go on the, y'all, y'all don't put it on the website. It has to go on the website in a prominent location.
No, the proposed.
I do. Yes, I do. Guarantee I do.
Good. I'm glad.
Moving on to B.
Judge, are we going to figure that out today, since we're on meeting dates? Can we not figure that out today, so we all know?
Oh.
I mean, we're talking about meeting.
Public hearing date. The required public hearing date.
Yeah, so we'd like to get that knocked out today, so we can post it for people, let people know. We can have it on our calendars. We can come back to the side of them, Judge, if we want to, but I just want to make sure we get those today, so everybody knows.
The date.
We have a meeting on the thirteenth.
That's it.
Do you have any idea when you're wanting to do that?
I think she went to get the calendar, Judge.
Oh, okay. Well, we'll move on to grants and come back to that. Item B, one, approve contract agreement number seventeen with Texas Health and Human Services Commission for the home delivered meals contract.
So move.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Same sign.
I've got the calendar. It's saying Friday, September the first, it's seventy-two hour notice for a September sixth public hearing. So the public hearing has to be on the September the sixth.
September the sixth?
Yes.
Oh, I actually already have it on my calendar for some reason, so.
September sixth is what, what the calendar says.
Yeah.
Which is, which is a Thursday.
September sixth, yeah, that's.
Yeah, it's already on our calendar from the pre-approved.
Is that the only one we have to have, Dale?
That's the only required public hearing, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Deal.
Thank you. And moving on to C, Public Works. C one, discuss and consider action to approve the method of procurement for American Rescue Plan Act ARPA-funded medical examiner's new facility. And authorize the agent to publish a notice and adopt an order delegating the evaluation authority to a select committee. Jason, you're here too. Do you need to let us know about what the process is for that?
Yes. So the recommendation is to approve a method of procurement for the medical examiner new facility and renovation project, just like you said right now, Judge. Order has been reviewed by the county attorney for legal sufficiency and Public Works recommends approval.
Make the motion to approve. We have a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the medical examiner's office RFP, or method of procurement, sorry. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. And the.
And then who was the selection committee on that? Sorry.
Then the next thing.
Oh.
To adopt an order delegating the evaluation authority.
We broke it up, we broke up the, yeah.
What is your suggestion on the evaluating authority?
We have the interim chief medical examiner, county engineer, and the commissioners' court administration manager.
Judge, I'm going to, I'm going to say again, I, I kind of think we ought to do that one too. I mean, this is a big deal. I mean, I don't think we ought to designate or delegate our authority on that one. I mean, this is.
Sounds good.
Okay.
So I would.
We'll do commissioners' court.
I would make a motion to amend the order that doesn't delegate the authority and that the commissioners' court does it.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the evaluation authority to be the commissioners' court and as a whole. All the, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. The motion passes. That's all we had on that one project. Yes. Are you, any? Item number two, discuss and consider execution of ARPA engineering work authorization, authorization number two with Gov'n for the Oasis County Courthouse and Jail wastewater line. We've already approved this money. I'll make the motion to approve.
Yes, ma'am.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. The motion passes. Item number three, approve a method of procurement, sealed bids for the Hilltop Community Center renovation. Authorize the purchasing agent to publish a notice and then the evaluating authority as well. So we'll split those up in two. Make the motion to approve the purchasing agent to publish a notice and the method of procurement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. And then the, did everyone vote? I'm kind of getting ahead of myself. Adopt an order delegating the evaluation authority for the Hilltop Community Center renovation. What is the suggestion on that one?
I'm, I'd make a motion, no, I'd make a motion as proposed.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the order as proposed. Who do you have on there, just since you're up at the micro home now?
We have a community service inland parks director, county engineer, and commissioners' court administration manager.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Same sign.
Was, I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, is Juan.
Yes, sir.
Were you going to be involved in the Hilltop? I mean, I thought I had asked.
Yes, I'll be, I'll be.
Okay.
He was on there.
He's in the committee, he's in the committee.
Yes. Was it your vote and I then too?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, okay. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number four, discuss and consider selection of urban engineering for the engineering services under master services contract for the Banketti wastewater improvement on the CDBG MIT mod.
Oh, man.
And then, when we're doing these CBDG ones, this is, we're doing them even before we get the funds?
This is just to get them ready because they're taking so long, yes.
Because we don't have the money yet, right?
Yes.
That's correct. That's correct.
Well, I guess I need to do this too. I was waiting to make sure we get the money, since we don't have any money. When are we going to ever get that dang money? Anybody know?
Nope.
Call. No, no, okay, I'll put my.
This is just approving them, but they will not start work until we get the funding approved for them.
All right, I'll put, I'll put.
That's what we've done on several of these.
Yeah.
How does this, I'm sorry, no one's second. I'll second for discussion's sake. On, on these two items, on item four and five, they're related, and that goes back to the Oasis County Water Control Improvement District number five. Is that correct?
Uh, what was the question again, Commissioner?
These both, both items four and five, this is tied into the authority of the Oasis County Water Control Improvement District number five?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
That was, that was a group we discussed earlier that didn't qualify because of the SAM.gov. So that, is that needed for, for MIT mod?
Uh, you know what, Commissioner, I did, I did bring up that question, and I think Anna is here. And I just want to make sure, I, I questioned.
Can Lulu help us?
Doesn't have.
Well, is this a project that we could do and not, like it would go through us and not go through them?
That's, I'm just trying to clarify.
Yes, sir, I, I questioned the same, Commissioner, so I guess we're still waiting, we're still waiting on some type of approval, I guess. Am I correct in saying that?
Yeah, I believe that Anna contacted GLO to clarify if they need that SAM.gov.
Well, do we know? So should we be doing this if we don't know the answer?
Yeah, really.
My, my question was, what, what Lulu mentioned earlier, that she's reached out to the Water Control in District Five and hasn't had no response. And so that's my worry, is if they're not responding on providing the SAM.gov information or procuring it, then why would we do the same with these?
I, I asked the same question you're asking, Commissioner.
Okay.
I know that we met with, we're just trying to get the engineers on board.
I, I know.
And then, and then once we do that, there will be no cost until when that gets approved.
There's nothing involved, other than just putting it on a list, and then the, the rest can be worked in the background?
Yes, sir.
Okay, then I'm, okay, thank you.
So to clarify this, if we vote to approve these with the master services contract, nothing will move forward until the approval from the DLO. And then they're the ones that are going to say whether the job can be finished or it's going to be approved and stuff like that. Just like our, ARPA people approve ours. It has to come from approval from the DLO. So if the DLO doesn't approve this, it gets stopped anyway.
Well, but hold on, let me ask, and that's a good point, Judge, but let me ask you this. I mean, why, for example, wouldn't, if we want to do this project, why wouldn't we just do this through the county? And not do it through, I'm just curious, right, because we know we qualify, right? I mean, we know we're good. I'm not saying anybody's bad. I'm just saying, what, do we, you know?
It's, uh, to me, Judge, I'm, Commissioner, is that, my understanding in dealing with CDBG, it always goes to the end user.
It goes where?
It always goes to the end user, the end user, the person's going to be the end user of the monies. And, and that was my question to, to Grant, to make sure that we could have this answered, because I've been, I've been asking that question already for a couple of, couple of weeks.
Comfortable approving anything for anybody that won't even respond to our inquiries.
Yes, sir.
So I, I can't support this today, not only, not because I don't support doing it, because I think we ought to do it, but I think we ought to look at a different way of doing it, maybe, and maybe, I, I mean.
I get you. Why, I think you're right about doing it as Oasis County, because we have to do it for the people, because they're an unincorporated area, right? I mean, that's not like that's incorporated, so they don't have the means that we do, so we could do it as Oasis County doing it.
I just.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Juan, I thought we discussed this, and I thought you were going to be, Oasis County was going to be in charge of the projects.
Yes, sir, but again, my question was to Anna is, since the, the number five is going to be the end user, they're the ones that are going to receive the project at the end, right? In other words, they're the ones that were doing the improvements on their property. It's not on our, it's not on the county right of way. And so, so it's going to belong to the maintenance and, and the end user is going to be number five.
It's in private land. It's in private property.
Well, it's, it's, some of it might be on our right of way, but some of it's going to, it's still, they're still, it's still being maintained by, by number five. And I think that was my question to, to Grant, is that since they're the ones that are going to be maintaining it, who's going to be, who's going to be responsible for?
I thought I saw Anna come in earlier.
She was here earlier.
Who was here earlier?
This is also projects that we had to turn in a list by a certain time too, to get pre-approved. So is that going to affect this if we were to change it?
Well, I think if we shift it to us being the ones who do it, as long as we do the project, I think we're okay, and I don't know that we can do that.
This is preapproval. Do you think we ought to maybe table these?
That's all I was trying to get to, can we check this out?
Anna's here, wait. Anna's here.
Anna, give us some clarification.
I'm in a hot seat now. Juan, you sure left fast.
Yes, I did.
Smart man.
Okay. We're trying to figure out on the Banketti wastewater improvement, the water control five. Number one, the question's been asked if the hesitation with, they couldn't do the ARPA funding, if they can't get the clearance, and we can't get the SAM.gov number for that, is that also required of this? And if they are not responding with paperwork, are they going to not do this in the future? And then Commissioner Chesney also said, well, could we do it just as Oasis County and not do it as the, so, yeah.
Great question.
A little bit of questions there.
Great questions. Actually, I was in contact today by Anavee with the water district ID number five this morning. And we plan to, I told her what documentation we're going to need. Basically, they do not need a SAM.gov, the CDBG MIT, because we're not giving them the money. We are going to do a repair for them, a project for them, so that's why they don't need that SAM.gov. But they will need.
Or how do we do that?
They will need an agreement stating specifically what the project is of, and that. and that they are guaranteeing that they have the financial stability to maintain the project after it's been completed. That is something that will be required by CDBG, by GLO.
So in your personal opinion, you think this is good to go with them, that this project is a good project?
What is the, I'm sorry.
The Banketti wastewater improvement.
The project is still being reviewed, as you know, we have RFIs.
It hasn't been cleared by the.
We, that's why I'm contacting her, so we have to.
None of our projects have, let me be clear.
Get all the, the specifics of what the project is going to be because without the specifics, GLO can't make an approval or not. So, that's where we have to work on. Um, but that's why we're selecting engineers, so they can help us with all the budgets, the tables, the, the narratives of the, and we are.
So you're saying we're selecting engineers? That was another question I had. So.
They're gonna start working.
We haven't been approved for funding on this, so are we spending monies before we find out if we're, so this selection is just for once we get the approval to speed up the process?
The engineers will help because we need a certified budget, certified by an engineer. And that's part of the RFIs that they wasn't submitted. Some had budgets, some just had, you know, this is how much we're gonna spend. So they want more specifics and that's where the engineers are gonna come and play. Um, the engineers usually.
Engineers are expecting to get paid for this work that they're doing this.
The engineers working with, are very familiar with CDBG funding, that you have to work, you know, provide the information, but there's no guarantee that the project will be completed or approved. Same thing that happened with, uh, when we did the previous title basin. They did submissions, maybe five applications, and they never did get paid because their contract has not been awarded yet. So based on the contract, that's when the start date comes, that's when all that.
And if it doesn't, then the county's not on the hook for any payments that we can't afford. It was like this. Okay.
Anna, that's what I was gonna ask. So the engineers, uh, they know that possibility, they might not get paid?
Correct. I mean, we're, we're offering this and their, their assistance, but they should be in the understanding that, that's the way CDBG works.
As long, as long as they're, they are aware, and I'm sure they've worked a lot, you know, this kind of, uh, contracts.
Yeah.
Okay, I think that's, that's what we needed to hear. We have a motion and a second to, um, select, uh, urban engineering for this project if it does go forward, so they can help with the process. Uh, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Same sign.
Abstain.
Abstain. One of, I thought you were the second.
Uh, for discussion.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I'll, he can, I can be the second if it's better.
Can you abstain if you're the second in the motion?
Can I, second a motion and still vote in opposed or?
It merely brings it to discussion.
Yeah, that's all I wanted.
It's not an indication.
So, he's the second. Um, item number five, discuss and consider selection of a DURA group for engineering services under master services contract for the Banketti water infrastructure project. Can you explain the difference in the wastewater and the infrastructure? Those were kind of confusing to me as well.
Um, on the, you're talking about the water?
These two. One is Banketti wastewater, one is Banketti water infrastructure, so.
Yeah, it's, it's the, it's the same, Judge. It's, uh, the infrastructure for the, for the water. In other words, it's for, uh, the distribution lines, fire hydrants.
One's for a building structure or something, yes.
Yeah, the first, the first one for the wastewater is for, pretty much covers everything because on that one, it's gonna be for underground util, it's gonna be for the underground infrastructure, manholes, wastewater treatment plant, uh, improvement. So it's a, it's, it's, it's a little bit different from the first one.
Okay.
So.
We have a motion. Do I have a second to, uh, approve a DURA group for engineering services under Water Control? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Same sign.
Abstain.
Another abstain. On item number six, discuss and consider selection of urban engineering for engineering services, master services contract for the drainage improvements around the area of Farm to Market Six Twenty Four and Farm to Market Seventy.
Uh, yes, uh, Judge Commissioners, we're recommending urban for, for this project.
So moved.
Hold on.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. The motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Juan.
Um, item three, D, or D one is purchasing, discussing.
Hold on, hold on.
Oh, yes, go ahead.
Juan.
Juan.
On the, uh, on the ME, do we go, do we go ahead and process, did we do the ME already to go for bids or what?
Uh, I thought we had that on the.
I don't think he gave us, gave us a report.
I think that was gonna be on item number.
He was supposed to, that's why he was supposed to be here.
Did C one, the medical examiner funded, it was the, it was just to approve a method of procurement and authorize them to publish a notice and a selection committee for it.
When I'm ready, when I'm ready to design, to look at the design.
Yes, sir. I mean, we can, we can, sorry, Commissioner, we can bring it back, Judge, for a presentation. Is that okay?
Yeah, next, next meeting?
Sir?
At next meeting?
Yes, sir.
Maybe we'll kick it back.
Yes, sir, I apologize.
Get it out three weeks. Okay. We have to do that, we have to do that, but.
Yeah, that wasn't on here for this list, yes. Um, purchasing, D one, discuss and consider authorizing approving amendment number two to the agreement with the AHI facilities for janitorial services for the Nuasis County Courthouse, RFP. And they did come back with another bid for us because of the situation we're in. They would like to continue services.
Yes, uh, this amendment is to memorial, this amendment is to memorialize a price de-escalation in the agreement and to approve the first of four one-year renewals. Recommendation is to authorize and approve amendment number two with the agreement with AHI. Uh, the amendment agreement has been reviewed by the county attorney for legal sufficiency and Public Works recommends approval.
I have a question, Teresa.
Sure.
How many employees do they bring in on a daily basis?
So here in the courthouse, they currently are contracting five employees. And with the de-escalation, they're gonna remove two, so that's gonna leave three for the courthouse. Now, line areas, I believe they have one per building. We have, uh, one at the, uh, central garage, four yards, and one at the records warehouse, and they're gonna reduce, uh, five days to two days for that contract.
Well, I, I remember, because I worked in purchasing, and I remember those outside buildings, uh, the employees used to kind of clean up their own.
Yep.
And, uh, right now, I mean, basically all they're doing is just doing the minimal, you know, take out trash and don't spend much time. So maybe we could do without employees in those areas and let, let our employees do, you know, like they used to in the past. Okay? And, uh, maybe that would be a savings and also, uh, I would like to consider having our own people come in, you know, on, employed by the county. Uh, I know it's adding, but on a part-time basis maybe, you know, see how it goes. Cause I've heard complaints about, uh, other departments that, you know, they're not, they're not cleaning like they're supposed to. And I know ourselves in our area, bathroom especially, they don't go in there every day. They might go take out the trash, but everything else is, you know, is not being cleaned. So that's my question. If, if it was.
When, and, and I will tell you, when we talked to Juan, when we talked about us, the county, doing this, he was also saying the same, that they would not be coming into the offices every day or doing anything. It was more of us cleaning our own offices and, um, them doing like a weekly trash pickup or something. It was, it was very similar. The other hesitation we had when we talked to Juan is the cost of equipment and supplies that the county was going to have to expand to get the buffers and mops and, what else did they tell us we had? I'm, I'm trying to think off the top.
Hand towels.
Everything that goes with that. So, when we talked to the contractor, AHI, they came back with this bid because of the county situation with a cheaper bid. That being said, each of us in our offices are going to have to still do a lot more work of your own cleaning in your own office and our bathrooms, kitchens, things like that. They, um.
Yes.
The services are going to be limited, but I, I think it's necessary. I don't think it's a bad thing for us at all.
And Coastal Parks also decided to pause service for their area from November to February. And that equaled a cost savings of, uh, twenty thousand dollars annually.
Well, I still would like to consider the outer buildings that employees, you know, the, we're gonna do cleaning anyway. I mean, they can do it.
Do their own.
And it's not like they do it every day either, you know? They just basically take out the trash and, you know, they kind of wipe down bathrooms and make it clean. So that's the way.
Does anybody in the outer buildings have a, John, you have an office out there and do you?
Yeah, we're, we're covered typically by Public Works in my office, so, I mean, it's not so much of an issue, but, um, I, I, kind of maybe a total, well, I, I, I worry about reduction of services, but I don't mind grabbing the trash and doing whatever I need to do it at home. I wouldn't mind, I don't have a problem doing it here at the office as well. But, uh, looking to the future, right? I, I, I believe we're gonna make it through this budget process, but maybe for y'all to get together with Court Administration, with, with Dale, and look at any and all contracts that we have. And I'm glad that the judge is able to, to work through this and get us a reduction, um, and test the market. The, the market may, I know some of our, our bids out there get one to zero, uh, companies. But I would like, I mean, if there's flexibility, if there's a way to be able to work that contract, I'd be more than happy to, to, to allow the judge to go and work those contracts on our behalf to see a reduction in savings. But if there's something that y'all can identify to help us looking, you know, for next year's budget especially, then please do so and, and, and bring it to court or at least bring it to the judge and then she can vet it, decide whether to bring it to court. Just because if we can, you know, we can capitalize on this type of structure here, I think that's great. You know, their willingness to work with us and reduce the cost and our ability to do it. So this is just kind of a catch-all for any and all that you can think of. I mean, I don't wanna put any extra work on you, but I think that really this going into this year or two of, of this budget that we will be inheriting or providing for ourselves could find some savings.
Right.
Maybe it doesn't at all, but if the contracts are not worded in a way that doesn't allow for this discretion, then I'd like to maybe see them put, put back out. If they're up for renewals, right? Maybe if they're in the middle of it, it may be not worth it. But if they're up for, say, their one-year renewal, whatever it may be, that may be something to consider. So, just a thought.
Just reassessment.
Yeah.
I, I agree. And one of the things our office is doing is going back through every contract and getting a copy in our office. And the thing that we were made aware of when we were looking for contracts is when we do an amendment or do another contract, it just gets voted on, but it doesn't get attached to the original contract where you can't go to one place and just get them. We're having to go through, search through the minutes and find key words or something that pertains to that contract. And we are going to keep a file with amendments or changes or anything. I also agree with you, Commissioner Hernandez, maybe on this contract, we focus on the public spaces in the courthouse that really needs to be cleaned. And if the outer offices are more just private offices, if they're not a public facility, maybe we should, should really make the, you know, direct the cleaning service to focus on those areas and we all clean up after ourselves. And I think they would be willing to work with us on this contract and to agree to that because they have been very agreeable and, and wanting to work with us and not lose this contract and understand the situation we're in.
The outer offices are more of a shop-type environment?
Yes.
Okay. So, and, again, in the past, uh, I don't know when we went to, uh, providing janitorial service for, for them, but in the past, uh, they were doing their own cleaning.
Well, you think they maybe do like two days a week for the outer offices? You know, so they can actually really clean the offices? I mean, and at one point, I mean, I don't know if employees will be mopping and everything else. But I'm just saying, you know, do like, uh, it, right? Do the outer office with part-time people to be, you know, to, twice a week to make sure those offices belong to the county or, or clean. And then the other three days, of course, staff takes out the trash or puts out the trash bags or whatever, but.
This contract was very limited services for all of them, so I think a, a service coming in and cleaning once or twice is not a bad idea. Continuing with this contract, it would be my suggestion. So I'd make the motion that we approve this. All of us are going to have to be doing the other outer things on a, on a more, even, even in the courthouse, so.
Second.
Uh, I, yeah, we have a motion and a second to continue with this and, and maybe some more discussion with the contractor in detail. And I, I plan to do that. Um, but all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. The motion passes. Um, this discuss and consider award and execution of agreement with Frontier, Frontier Way Solutions for the Nuasis County outer residents, and this is paid for by the residents. I'll make the motion to pass.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
I just want to thank William Davis for his years of service. Him and his company have done excellent work for us. And I know we kind of did a goodbye a few months ago, but this was kind of the transition to work with Frontier. And so, thank you for all you've done and thank you guys for taking over and, uh, look forward to a great, uh, connection and cooperation that we've had in the past.
Yes, thank you very much. I live in the outer and we love having trash pickup. Thank you very much. We do not mind paying for it.
You should give him all your notes.
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. The motion passes. Item number three, discuss and consider award and execution of an agreement with Vulcan Construction Materials for, and, and these um, have already been brought back up. I think these are just, um, formal votes on these things for the contracts to be executed.
Correct, Judge.
Um, so I'll make the motion to pass.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. Item number four is the same, discuss and consider award and execution of the contract with P Squared Emulsion Plants. Um, that's the same. It has come up. We have already approved and this is part of Juan Pimentel's and he will only use what's necessary in his budget while, until it expires. Um, I make the motion to pass, sorry.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. The next one is the same, discuss and consider award and execution of agreement with Colorado Materials, LTD for flexible base that he uses as well. He has a budget. He only uses it when he needs it and until his budget runs out. So I make the motion to pass as well.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. The motion passes. Item number six, discuss and consider award and execution of a contract agreement with Ergon Asphalt and Emulsions for asphalt. Motion to pass.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. The motion passes. Thank you. Item number seven, discuss and consider authorizing and approving agreement with Grant Works for grant administration and project management, uh, in the amount not to exceed the amount of one million, one hundred and fifty-six thousand, three hundred dollars. Um, we have a motion.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Just a question, why is that such a specific amount? Anybody have any idea?
A percentage of the funds that, uh.
Oh, from the grants that we get, then the percentage can go to it. Yes, thank you. It's just such a weird amount.
We actually went back to Grant Works on, uh, recommendation of Commissioner Jag to negotiate that down to a three percent. Yeah, which I think that needs to be significantly stated because if I remember correctly, the last grant that we did for grant administration was ten percent, up to ten percent.
Wow.
Yeah, and so, uh, I, I appreciate Commissioner Gonzalez.
Yes.
Now, I'm gonna look real closely because I don't, I gotta tell you, I don't even think we need to be spending one point one million dollars either. Okay, so I'd like, I'm gonna have to see someone justify that, but I do want to thank Commissioner Gonzalez for getting that down from what was a percentage of like nine to 10, down to about three and, and Grants Department and whoever else worked on this. I'm not just saying Commissioner Gonzalez, so everybody who helped, thank you because I still don't like that number because to me, that number means we're not gonna be spending on projects. We're gonna be spending on administration. So I'm gonna still be, I'm just saying, I'm approving this, I mean, I'm voting to approve this today, but I'm gonna be looking real closely at how these mon, this money is spent because I still don't think we need to spend a million one because we could give it to other people. But that's way, way better than where we started on this.
Yeah.
Way better, so thank y'all for doing.
We can give it to Grants Department to expand so we don't have to pay that.
Yeah, kicking the can, buddy, kicking the can. One-time thing.
Okay, we did that motion and second and voted already on that, so we're good. Yes. Item number eight, discuss and consider adopting an order to authorize and approve a method of procurement for request for proposals, real estate brokerage, and I believe, uh, Commissioner Gonzalez, this is yours, for, um, drainage detention ponds possibly.
I thought we already did this.
Allocating funding, uh, for, from the CDB. Allocating funding from the CDVG MIT mod infrastructure projects, authorizing a purchasing agent to publish notice. And the court shall not delegate its evaluation authority. Shall not?
I thought we already did this.
No, we did the ARPA. We did a real estate brokerage. RFP for ARPA. This is for CBDG MIT mod. And that language just says that you're, we are not going to delegate an evaluation authority. And.
Can we not do this?
Were you the same person though? Can we use the same person for both?
I believe so, yes.
Yeah, could we not? Because I don't think we're going to have enough for two groups to do on this. I mean, it's not going to be that many. It's just going to be whether, because let's see, mine are both COG. Yours, what are yours? Both ARPA or yours?
ARPA and.
Okay, so in other words, this fulfills the procurement. But that's the, that is the question. We already did one for the other. Can the two be one?
Yeah.
Meaning?
I'd have to look into that and get back to you.
Yeah, because I don't want to send out two RFPs.
Well, Mark, if I do good.
Do what?
If we use the same person.
Private, I'm just saying, do we need to send out, we need to send out two RFPs for the same services?
It looks like Anna wants to tell us something.
I don't understand that. I would think COG would be fine with how we do it with ARPA because ARPA's got the federal rules. Why do we have to do a, I get why we have to do ARPA. I don't get why we have to do COG separate from ARPA.
Correct. I think the language has to be specific in the agreement, in the contract, making sure that we don't just specify that it's ARPA and that we can use, it's for Oasis County. And then we can use that realtor for that, for both.
What I'm saying though is, I understand that we have to do ARPA because that's procurement, federal rules. COG is different.
It's still.
Why couldn't we put COG under the ARPA one?
We still have to do the procurement and that's fine. But the language that's on the contract cannot just say specific to ARPA when you're using it for COG.
Right. But I'm saying, can't you use one that says ARPA and COG?
Yes.
Okay, so then we don't need to send out two RFPs. But I think we're approving, I think that's what we're doing today is we're approving another RFP because we've already approved one. So we got to be clear for purchasing because what we're telling them if we vote for this today is we're sending two out.
That's correct.
And I'm saying that's silly.
We're saying we don't just change the wording on the other and don't do it.
First one?
We do have Natalie with Grant Works that now it's approved. So she can assist with GLO requirements that she's more familiar with.
Okay, but today's vote would be sending out something I don't think we need to be doing because this is the COG one. And we should be able to include COG in the ARPA one. Go back and amend the ARPA one.
I'm so sorry. Good morning. Natalie Gonzalez with Grant Works. Nice to be here and see all of you. And actually, I live in Corpus Christi. So, you know, it's nice to always be in my hometown court visiting. But actually, GLO likes to see it separate. They don't want to see it combined with another agency. So because they're their own agency and it's a completely separate bucket of funds that we're talking about, it's not related to ARPA. It has to be completely streamlined. And that's, GLO is very particular about that. So where in other cases, we could potentially do and combine one RFP because I see exactly what you're saying, Commissioner. It makes more sense to just do one. Why are we going to post twice? You could just run it once and you're going to combine these programs. But with GLO, it's a different ballgame. So that's the reason why we have to do two different ones.
GLO likes to see is different than it's a rule. So is it a mandated rule by GLO?
It's a GLO rule.
Okay, so that's a different answer than likes to see. So just, I mean, and so if you can show me that rule, that'd be great because if we have to, then we have to. But it's kind of ridiculous that we have to, but.
Agreed.
But whatever.
Thank you.
But if that's a rule, then I can live with a rule.
So we have to move forward on this?
I guess so.
So can, what all are we needing? A motion on?
Second.
Request for proposals.
Adopting an order to authorize and approve the method of procurement for real estate brokerage services to assist Oasis County in the acquisition of real property for council of governments, method of distribution, et cetera, et cetera. That would be the motion I think these fine gentlemen have already made.
Yes, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. I think you're done, Jason. Thank you very much. Moving on to E, the auditors. Item number one, discuss and consider approval of a quote from Perfect Apps for software for district courts, county courts, and appointed defense attorneys to automate the creation of approval routing and data export of attorney fee vouchers.
Thank you, Your Honor. We've been working with the district courts for many, many years on payments of court point attorney fees where we've gotten a lot of attorneys always complaining that it takes them months to get paid, which is sometime that is true. And the delays can be found in multiple places. We've been trying to work something with the district courts and our offices to try to streamline this. We had something with our current software that we're going through, but it was very expensive. We did find this Perfect Apps. And this Perfect Apps can work through a process where they computerize everything for a total cost of $42,000 one year. They waive the maintenance fee. The maintenance fee is only $6,000. So in '24, '25, there'll be a small $6,000 increase for maintenance. We've met with the district courts and the district judges agree that this is something they would like to do. Now, just so you know, this software can be used in multiple aspects. So for example, if another department has a form that they use that they submit out to anybody that has, comes in for a fee, this can be used for that. And that way, we can simplify some items where they don't have to have paperwork forms and we can work with that. So we plan to, if the court approves this, the funds that we just talked about earlier, the 1921 COs did earn some interest. Interest is unallocated and the interest will cover this $42,000. So with that, we're submitting this Perfect App request to you for your approval if you so choose.
And this won't, this is not something that you have to have for workday that would incorporate. This is total separate software program.
Total separate. This will, this will belong to the county. It will be managed by IT and at the moment, the court administration on the fourth floor. However, if we, for example, if we do have something where, so we do have some IDs that some of the court point attorneys have, we can modify those forms where they manually, so manually put something, it can be something automatic. We can work with all departments that have these. And this can be managed where the person logs on the website, they go to the spot, they put in their information, it goes through a workflow and then goes to whoever it is and then they process it. And then we, then it either gets to us in a computer access where we can download it from this file and put it into Workday and it'll immediately process. So we gave a demo to Judge Stith and he really liked what he saw. And we talked to the court point attorneys in the meeting we had with the board judges. They were very excited to see this happen. This is something that will take about two months to develop and not require that it be part of our system.
And what's the ongoing, is there an ongoing cost?
Very small. The first year, no ongoing costs. After that's only $6,000.
Where's, I'm sorry, where did you? Where did?
This funding will be coming from, as Teresa said earlier, we have a 21 certificate obligation. As you all said, most of the funds have been allocated, which is true. But these funds that they were in the bank have earned interest. The interest is unallocated and we know there's enough interest to cover this. And we're asking that to be used for that purpose.
We have a motion by Commissioner Modo, seconded by Commissioner Hernandez. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Item number two, the budget change order number 20 for fiscal year '22, '23.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Moving on to F, human resources. Item number three, discuss and consider accepting the Texas Juvenile Justice Department salary adjustment, direct grant allocations for biennium '24, '25, administered in accordance with the General Appropriations Act. Yeah, you want to.
Thank you, Judge.
I think you've already talked to us about it too.
Briefed you. But yeah, as I had mentioned a couple of days ago, the legislative session was unprecedented fiscally, especially with regard to juvenile probation. This has been years in the making. And the legislature has recognized that the field of juvenile probation does handle most of the kids going through our system and will always handle most of the kids going through our system. And I say this despite the issues that the state facilities are having. So as a result of these years of talking to the legislature, they awarded two pots of money, basically. One is about a 30% increase in state aid. And for Oasis County, that equates about $500,000. The second one is why we're here today is specifically for salary increases for certified chief probation officers, juvenile probation officers, juvenile supervision officers, and those supervisors who monitor or any of those people or supervise any of those people. So it equates to a 5% this year and then another 5% next year.
We're very happy for y'all. We'll make, I'll make the motion to pass. I understand this is allocated by the legislature. We have nothing to do with this. So for our employees that aren't getting something like this, we're very sorry, but we have no control over what the state legislature allocates to you all.
But the good thing is, Judge, for once, they gave money to back it up. This is fully funded by the state of Texas. And that's unusual. Normally, we just get unfunded mandates. So, and I think that's important that you state that because unless someone has fully funded state funding, I, you know, with this budget, I'm not supporting any raises that aren't, period. So these are ones that are obviously mandated by the state and are fully funded by the state of Texas and isn't costing our general fund a dollar. Correct, Dale?
That's correct. We're working with, right now, they already kind of get a settlement pay. This is an increase that settlement pay that's paid by the state aid. So it does not increase the general fund.
I second your motion if you've made it.
Hernandez already did. I had a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. 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 Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes. Thank you very much. We appreciate you being here and so long to you.
Thank you.
If there's nothing else we don't have to do, I'm going to move to go into executive.
First, if you want to discuss the two items, E, for E and for C, in executive, there'll have to be a unanimous vote. If the court believes that discussing these matters in open will be detrimental to the position of the county.
Do we have to wait for Commissioner Gonzalez here? It has to be all five of us or can we be unanimous without?
He's not in the room. He's not in the room. But I mean, we could try to go get him. But, and the other thing, Judge, is I, how do we, do we need to make any vote?
We have to have a recorded.
Does that one has to be recorded?
Yes, those have to be recorded.
Those have to be recorded.
If we vote 5-0 or 4-0 or whatever.
Check on that, sir.
Okay.
And then was there an intention to not have?
I would like to move that, other than the ones that have to be recorded, that we don't record the rest of them in executive session for today.
Do a certified and a recorded agenda, yes. And I was told we can do that too.
And was there, was there a vote on B1 for grants?
I don't really, we went to B1.
B1?
Yes, B1.
That was the Texas Health and Human Services.
We voted on that. Yes.
Okay.
So do we want to, okay, so I would move that we don't record the ones that don't have to be recorded.
We have a motion to do a partial recorded and certified agenda.
Second.
I got to put that, I've got to put that on as a, I've got to put it on as an item. It's not on there. It's not on here. Not posted. So that was my motion. I don't know if I got a second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, now he's back.
Unanimous? Oh, here comes Commissioner Gonzalez. Are you a yes for that? We have to be unanimous. He is, he's a yes.
That was on the, that was just on the recording?
Just on the recording.
Of the non-recorded ones? Now we have to vote to the other ones?
Yeah, the two that we're going to bring up, yes. Yes, yes. So we have to have a unanimous vote on items C and E in order to take them into executive. The county attorney is telling us. So I will make the motion to bring items C and E both into executive session for discussion because I think it would be detrimental to discuss in public on.
I second the motion.
C and which one?
C and E.
C and E.
We have to have a unanimous vote on the collective.
And those will have to be recorded, I guess. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous, we're good.
C and which one?
C and E.
C and E. She is saying we needed a vote to take them into executive and we just voted to take them into executive. Yeah, they're down there, but we.
What do we do with County Road 18?
Exactly.
Which one?
County Road 18.
Which number? We have to go into executive.
Ginny.
It's, she has it in executive.
It's executive session.
She has it in executive.
It's F.
Yes.
Number F.
Okay, so we are going into executive session. Public notices given that Commissioner's Court, it is 11:32, let me state. Public notices given that Commissioner's Court may elect to go into executive session anytime during the meeting to discuss matters listed anywhere on the agenda when authorized by the provisions of the Open Meetings Act, Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code. To the extent there has been a past practice of distinguishing items for public deliberation and those for executive session, the public is advised that the court is departing from that practice and reserves the right to discuss any legal agenda item, any listed agenda items in executive session when authorized by law to do so.[1578.94] In the event the Commissioners' Court elects to go into executive session regarding an agenda item, the section or sections of the Open Meetings Act authorizing the executive session will be publicly announced by the presiding officer in accordance with the authority of Government Code Vernon's Texas Code, section five-five-one dot zero-seven-one, five-five-one dot zero-seven-two, five-five-one dot zero-seven-three, five-five-one dot zero-seven-four, five-five-one dot zero-seven-four-five, five-five-one dot zero-seven-six, five-five-one dot zero-eight-six, five-five-one dot zero-eight-seven. The Commissioners' Court will hold an executive session to consult with attorneys, including matters related to litigation, deliberate regarding real property, prospective gifts, personnel matters, including termination, county advisory bodies, security devices, and/or economic development negotia, negotiations, and other matters that may be discussed in an executive session. Upon completion of the executive session, the Commissioners' Court may, in an open session, take such action as appropriate on items listed in an executive session. Item A, consult with the county attorney and outside counsel regarding legal matters related to the claim by Monica Pettis dated June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three, and related matters, Texas Government Code five-five-one dot zero-seven-one. Item B, consult with the county attorney regarding legal matters related to personnel needs at the Nuasis County Medical Examiner's Office, funding sources for office personnel and related matters, Texas Government Code five-five-one dot zero-seven-one. Item C, consult with the county attorney regarding legal matters related to potential Nuasis County Chief Medical Examiner separation agreement negotiations, Texas Government Code five-five-one dot zero-seven-one. Deliberate business and financial issues relating to separation agreement and related matters, Texas Government Code five-five-one dot zero-seven-two-five. Item D, consult with the county attorney regarding legal matters related to potential sale of three hundred and sixteen point five-eight-five acres of land adjacent to Richard M. Orchard Regional Fairgrounds located at twelve thirteen Terry Shamsi Boulevard, Texas Government Code five-five-one dot zero-seven-one. Item number E, consult with the county attorney regarding legal matters related to the status of contract negotiations of the County Bank Depository Agreement and County and District Clerk Court Registry Funds Bank Depository Agreement with Frost Bank pursuant to Lexa, Texas Local Government Code one-one-six dot zero-two-one, and one-one-seven dot zero-two-one, Texas Government Code five-five-one dot zero-seven-one, and deliberate contract negotiations of bank depository agreements, Texas Government Code five-five-one dot zero-seven-two-five. Item F, consult with the county attorney regarding legal matters regarding the status of interlocal agreement between Nuasis County Drainage District Number Two and Nuasis County on the repairs for County Road Eighteen Bridge, located at the intersection of County Road Eighteen and County Road Sixty-five, and other related matters, Texas Government Code five-five-one dot zero-seven-one. Item G, consult with the county attorney regarding legal matters related to the Secure Courthouse Parking Garage, Texas Government Code five-five-one dot zero-seven-one, and deliberate regarding security, Texas Government Code five-five-one dot zero-seven-six, and all related matters. It is eleven thirty-six, and we are in executive session. One forty-four, and we are coming back from executive session in open session, we have item A. I need a motion to reject the demand on the claim for Monica Pettis, and allow out, outside counsel and the county attorney to continue the negotiations.
So moved.
We, we have a motion from Commissioner Hernandez, and I will second that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. The motion passes, thank you. Item B, there are two different motions we will need, Commissioner Mataz, you want to start that off?
Yes, Judge, I make a motion to unallocate ARPA funding that designated from precinct three funds, originally for the Assistant Medical Examiner and two medical examiner investigators.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign, the motion passes. Commissioner Gonzalez, I believe you have a similar motion on this, item B.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to unallocate the funds I had allocated to the ME autopsy technician, based on the personnel we had at that time.
And that was your ARPA funds as well?
Our ARPA funds.
Yes, uh huh. We have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign, the motion passes. That is the extent of our agenda, do we have any adjournments in memory?
Yes.
Yes, Commissioner? Yes, please go ahead.
I have one on, in memory of Cody Ryan Pettis, December third, nineteen ninety-three, to August the thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, very young, very young. Cody Ryan, also known as Cody Ryan CP in Kukui, he was a mentor, educator, and coach. Cody entered internal arrest August the thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, at the age of twenty-nine. Was born in December third, nineteen ninety-three, to his parents Cynthia A. Pettis in Permian Garcia, Corpus Christi, Texas. Cody had a love and passion for baseball, as soon as he could, pick up a bat, learn to play ball. Education was key to his success, and failing was not an option. He was quick to help and guide others to also be successful. Cody graduated tenth in his class on four H Woody High School, and was starting shortstop for the Torjons in twenty twenty-twelve. He attended New Mexico Junior College on a full baseball scholarship, and played middle infield for the Thunderbirds. Cody continued to play ball in his baseball career and education at the Coastal Bend College, where he played outfield and middle infield in the, with the, for the Cougars. And he also earned his Associate of Science. He completed his baseball career playing for the Dust Devils at Texas A&amp;M International University, where he earned his bachelor's in genealogy and minor in biology. Cody was offered a teaching coaching position at Bishop High School at the start of twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen. He was a natural in his classroom, and enjoyed teaching biology, anatomy, and physiology. Coaching was a new love after his baseball career. Cody coached football and baseball as an assistant coach, and enjoyed working with students, athletes, and encouraging them to be successful on and off the field. He earned his master's degree in education at the University of Texas Arlington, with a focus on education, leadership, and policy studies. Cody was working on earning his administrative certification, so he could step up into leadership as an assistant principal, and work on his PhD in education, to later continue his leadership at Bishop ISD. He was known as, or he was known to be the Joseph, Joseph known for his handsome smile, and quick to be witty, always friendly, and extremely competitive. Failure was not an option to him, and he gave it all he had, no matter what he attempted to do. He loved the New York Yankees and the Dallas Cowboys. Cody is joined now in heaven with his great-grandparents, Amelia and Benito Perez, and Felipe and Maria Acevedo. He is survived by his, I don't know what this word means, but, by his brother, Permian A., and Alisa Garcia. Parents, Joe and Rosalinda Perez, Uncle Joe, Suzanne Perez Jr., Aunt Joanne, and Danny Flores. And Uncle Robert Perez, cousins Clarissa Perez, Bobby Perez, Jase Flores, Joe Perez III, Antonio Perez, Adriana Perez, Jessica Perez, Christopher Perez, Miguel Perez, Dirk Flores, and Jacqueline Perez. Second cousins, Kaden Perez, Jesse Flores, Rocco Domacita, Bishop ISD family, along with numerous extended members and family members. If, prayers go out to the family, I know you will be missed by friends, family, and, and those that they knew and well. May we bless the family, amen.
Amen, absolutely, yes. Are there any others?
Judge, I just want to express my condolences to the family, I, I know some of the uncles, so I just want to express my condolences to them.
Yes, we all send our condolences to the family, sounds like he was a really exceptional young man, so, yes, very sorry. And then I will accept a motion to adjourn. We have a motion, do we have, and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, we are adjourned. My phone is buried, one fifty-two.